I call to order this special meeting of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for April 29th. We'll go right into our administrative session and Commissioner Delgado will be sitting in for votes tonight. First item is 81 Black Rock Turnpike Compliance Review for Minor Revisions to Special Permit Approval of Post-Road Residential LLC for a 256-unit use residential project. Ms. Harrigan?
Thanks so much. I'm going to turn it over to the development team. As you may recall, this was approved by special permit by the board previously. And from the revision from schematic drawings to building plans, they've had to make some revisions. And so I'm going to let the applicant team speak to that.
Thank you. Just to make sure the record is clear, the original approval was for 245 units.
Please state your name for the record, please.
Sure, Tom Montelli.
Thank you.
Residential. So my name is Tom Montelli. I'm a partner at Post-Road Residential. And Post-Road Residential was the applicant under which 81 Black Rock Turnpike received special permits and coastal site plan approved February of 2024. We're here for two reasons. First, we are here requesting confirmation that the proposed change is in fact a minor modification. All of the, the proposed plan is, and continues to comply with all of the zoning regulations as amended. The building's design quality is the same, has only gotten refined and better since we were here for our approval in 2024. And we just wanted to come here and present the minor modification properly. The only change, and what the purpose of this discussion is focused on, is one minor unsubstantial change that we made to the building's rear elevation. On the screen is the, is the approved site plan on the top page. And if you scroll down, you can see the proposed plan on the second page, which highlights the one minor change that is the purpose of this discussion. What we did was pull the rear elevation further away from the Metro North train track by roughly an additional 65 feet. Reason we did that was to create a more pleasant, livable environment for our customers in the rear of the building. That is the only change, and the proposed plan as shown is still compliant, again, with all of the zoning regulations as amended. So we'd be happy to answer any questions if there are.
I have a question. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Montelli. Good to see you again. I was wondering, where are the 11 additional units?
Commissioner Harrison, there, there are none. The, the agenda mentioned 256 units. That, that's incorrect. The, the unit count has not changed.
Okay, I'm sorry. You did say that. I'm, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Got it.
Is the height changing? It looks as though you're squishing the building down. So how are you fitting in the same number of units to a smaller footprint? It looks like you're reducing the footprint of the building.
Yes, the, the minor change is a reduction in building footprint. Again, we moved it 65 feet further away from the train tracks. The height remains the same. It's roughly 58 feet in height, so under the 70-foot regulation, and it's still five stories.
So where, how are you, are you reconfiguring something else to allow that?
Uh, yes. To accommodate the same unit count in a smaller bu, building footprint. Two, two or three things happened. One, we were studying the market specifically, our neighbor's trademark in Alto. We realized that our unit size, on average, was about 15% to 20% larger than what those were. So we reduced it to be about 10% over the market. So we reduced the unit square foot slightly. And we made one change to a, a part of the building that is closer to the train tracks that has a courtyard that once had a single-loaded elevation of units. We made that double-loaded, which means you have units on, on both sides of that elevation as opposed to just one. So that's how we were able to keep the same unit count while keeping the building height the same.
Thank you.
Motion. Senator Levy?
Yeah, I'd move to approve the compliance application. Minor change falls within the ambit of what we previously approved. And based upon that, I think we should reaffirm our approval of this project.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Ford?
I agree with everything Mr. Levy said.
Other comments? Let's put this vote, all in favor of the motion to approve the compliance application. Raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is 116 Sherman Street, request of Michael Meehan Esquire for 100% release of a bond pertaining to site improvements. 50% balance owed at $31,257.50 in the center design district. Sorry, again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This application has already had released 50% of their bond. And they had some work remaining that was reviewed both by the tree warden for installation of two trees within the public right-of-way in front of the completed building. And a few other items that were reviewed by Anthony Santiago from our engineering department and found to be acceptable. So both the tree warden and our engineering department recommends for full release of the bond at this time.
Have a motion on the item? Second. Senator Levy? Commissioner Ford?
Based on comments by staff, seems like it's ready to go. I've been by the property a couple of times. It was a nice design, and it's a nice, turned into, it's a nice building. You knew the means would do a good job, so I approve the release.
Nothing further. Other comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve the release of the bond, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Onto old business. 1427 and 1443 Kings Highway, special permit application of John and Tiffany Philbin pertaining to the construction of an 18-unit residential building in the Design Commercial District, Commerce Drive District. PH 485422, 25. The expiration date is July 26th. Sorry.
1427 and 1443 Kings Highway, special permit. The subject property is an approximately 13,498 square foot site that is located in the Commerce Drive area Design District overlay, so that underlying Design Commercial Design, Design Commercial District zone. The property is located on the east side of Kings Highway with direct frontage on Ash Creek Boulevard to the north. The adjacent property contains a detention basin located to the rear of the site. And a portion of that site wraps around on the Constant Comet Way frontage. There are screening pines and trees that have been installed at the border of this neighboring property adjacent to Constant Comet Way and along Ash Creek, Ash Creek Boulevard. The applicant seeks a special permit to construct an 18-unit four-story structure with three levels of residential over one level of garage parking, with 24 parking spaces. And the building lobby, elevator, bike parking, and stairwells also at that first level. The building materials include a brick exterior with a shingle-style roof. And all units are approximately 900 through 950 square foot, two bedrooms. The applicant has indicated that the Zoning Board of Appeals granted a variance for this project to allow the increase in residential use to 100% without ground level commercial provided. And, and also from the parking requirements at that time. However, this project does provide 1.3 parking spaces per unit, which is consistent with other TOD-adjacent approved projects. WPCA has provided approval to connect to the town sewer, and public water is available for the property. The stormwater system has been designed to accommodate the one-year storm event with a drainage report that has met town engineering requirements as the site has a well, has well-draining gravel layers on site. The landscape plan provides a mixture of deciduous and evergreen screening around the property boundaries to the north and south sides of the site and adjacent to the Kings Highway entrance. The detention pond located on the adjacent site is a regulated wetland, which triggered prior in the Wetlands Agency review and approval. An email by Inland Wetlands Officer Sarah Neefsey confirms that this approval is still in effect until 2031 due to pandemic extensions provided by the legislature. The applicant has submitted an affordability plan per the inclusionary requirements. The project needs to meet Fairfield's inclusionary requirement with 10% of the units provided as deed-restricted affordable for a minimum period of 40 years at 80% of the area median income. This results in two two-bedroom units provided. A neighbor has provided comment that the proposal seems an improvement over existing conditions, but also that the site would be a good location to be considered for a pocket park. The considerations for the special permit are found in Section 25.7.7. Is a development shown on the site and architectural plans of such character to harmonize with the neighborhood? To accomplish a transition in character between areas of unlike character? To protect property values in the neighborhood? To preserve and enhance the appearance and beauty of the community? And to avoid undue traffic congestion? We did receive some last-minute comments from our Economic Development Director, Mark Barnard, which I'll provide to you right now. And I would just ask that some of these comments, if you decide to approve this project, that you just add that additional revision to the affordability plan shall be, shall be approved by the Economic Development Director. And that's all I have. Ms. Harrigan, are those, that memo that you're distributing, is that in the record? Yes, it is. It's on the, it's within the file. Okay, thank you. Available via the agenda link. That's all I have.
Thank you. And Commissioner Delgado, are you up to speed on this? Okay. Do we have a motion on the item? Commissioner Bronn?
Move to approve.
Second?
One second.
Sorry. Okay, Commissioner Bronn, go ahead.
Yeah, so I went through the criteria for approval. Is it of such character to harmonize with the neighborhood? Yes, it is very attractive, thoughtful design, fitting in with the transit aesthetic. I love the design of this building. It's very refreshing to have something I can wholeheartedly enjoy the design of. Is also, it's not so close to the single-family homes that it would, different from them. It's not really that close to them. Does it accomplish a transition in character between areas of unlike character? Yes, it transitions from the single-family neighborhood on the New England Avenue area to the fair, the metro center area by having a modest-sized, multi-family buildings. Does it protect property values? Yes, the location, scale, and design will only help. Does it preserve and enhance the appearance and beauty of the community? Yes. If, if, the design is, is great. Does it avoid undue traffic congestion? I don't think it'll create any traffic congestion, especially considering it's right adjacent to the metro center, transit center. Also, they satisfied, satisfactorily answered questions about drainage and detention basin. And they did point out that, based on the pandemic, the Inland Wetlands permit that was granted in 2017 has been extended for, I think, 14 years. So they, they have plenty of time left to use that wetlands permit. So I commend the, the Philbin brothers for putting together a really, a really great plan.
Before we get to Commissioner Randolph, the condition that Mark Barnard had recommended.
That would be a condition as well. Add that to my motion.
Okay. Commissioner Randolph?
Um, I agree that the building meets the considerations for the special permit, and I'm not going to read through them, but, and I am, just to be clear, I am endorsing the approval of this. But this building falls significantly short of what this community deserves. And it falls short because it complies with the rules that we have, not the rules that have been painfully and thoughtfully incorporated in our planning documents, specifically the TOD. The TOD calls for retail on the ground floor of this building. This commission has failed to enact zoning text amendments that would allow this, this neighborhood to meet the standards set in the, in the planning document. It does meet the standards here, but those standards are minimal and insufficient. But I am suggesting an approval. It also falls short of thoughtfully using the surrounding parking in the area. This area is grossly overparked. And our, our ordinances require additional parking, which is a failure of this commission to address the needs of the community. So while it does, and I, I, I think that the appearance, the use of brick and style are superficially pleasing, the design and programming of this building are not. And it's, it's this commission's responsibility to do better. Right now, we have a POCD that is stuck. I have six or eight text amendments which are stuck that would help us plan more thoughtfully and better, and have better buildings than this. But we're now approving buildings that really fall short of what this community deserves and what the, what our planning documents have outlined. So I am approving this and suggesting approval, but I'm also asking my fellow commissioners and suggesting that we can do better than this.
Thank you. Other comments? Commissioner Levy?
I'd just like to add, if memory serves, I think going back either seven or eight years, we'd actually approved a project on this site which did have commercial on the first floor. And apparently in the interim, economically, that has not proved to be feasible for this particular location that is saddled between these two roads. And that's apparently why the Zoning Board of Appeals granted a variance on the issue of, a variance so that the, it could be 100% residential. So I think, I mean, we had practically, previously approved it with commercials, just the market didn't pan out for this particular site. I do agree that, once again, we do have probably more parking than is necessary. But I must say, compared, drove by the property the other day, and this will be a vast, vast improvement.
Thank you. Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, I will echo my fellow commissioners' comments on, on the, on why we need to approve this. It does meet our special permit requirements. And a side note, I would like to make a non-binding recommendation to include a pocket park. I would like to see more greenery in this area of town. I think it's sorely missing from this area. And if there is, I think we discussed this during our proceedings, that there could be perhaps some room for that. So I would like to make that as a non-binding recommendation to the developer. And I'd also like to say, you know, I think it's very thoughtfully done. These are the types of developments we want to see in town, and I, and I'm, you know, looking forward to, to seeing this approved tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bronn?
Does he, does he, will Kathy, okay, I just need someone to think second my recommendation.
Yeah, Commissioner Bronn?
I would second it, except I don't know if there's room on this site for a pocket park. That would be something to consider, but non-binding as a possibility, maybe adding a little more greenery. I mean, we always like more greenery. It seems like it's a very tight site, and I don't know if that would even be possible. But I guess I would say, consider the possibility of doing that.
Randolph?
I'm not sure there's any space on the site for a pocket park. I think it's a good intent, but I don't, I don't have the site plan in front of me, but I don't believe there's any space for a pocket park.
My other comment was, I, I don't think it's our commission's fault, and I don't think it's this applicant's fault that the design came in the way it is. They obviously put forth multiple designs over the years, and they've been trying to get this thing done. It's a perfect location for this exact type of development. They did get ZBA waiver for the requirement for commercial, and that, that's appropriate. All of that. So I, I absolutely don't agree that it's anybody's fault. This is the way it's going to be. Every parcel can do everything that everybody wants. This is appropriate for this parcel.
Thank you. Just back to Commissioner Harrison's request. Is it, it's your motion, so is it your preference to keep it as is?
I would say, consider the possibility of adding more greenery.
Yeah, it's a non-binding recommendation.
Yes.
Okay.
Consider the possibility, but.
I think it's always good to consider the possibility, and it's been echoed, I think, by a neighbor as well, so.
It's, it's a good intent. It's a good intent, but I'm not sure if it's practical to, to put a pocket park there.
Okay.
Okay, so we're adding language about recommending adding additional green space to the extent possible.
Thank you.
Right. Good wording.
Okay. Any additional comments? I agree with everything my fellow commissioners have said. I think this is a vast improvement to what's there now. I also would have preferred to see ground floor commercial. I will, I think we have to take the, you know, their word about the economic viability of that. And, and I do agree with Commissioner Randolph's comments about the, the parking situation. But again, based on the application we have before us, I think it's thoughtfully designed and, and a huge improvement over what's there now. So I will be supporting it as well. Okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve the special permit application, raise your hand or say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to our public hearings, the first item is a continuation of the public hearing from last week. 168 King Drive, zoning compliance application of John J. Moransky for Christopher Coco and Andre Kierkarski pertaining to a new 10-unit residential development pursuant to Section 830G of the Connecticut General Statutes in a Residence A District. We left off, I believe we had heard from the applicant, Public and Attorney Green. And there were some revisions to some of the closing documents that we were going to walk through.
Yeah, if I may, I'd maybe give you like two minutes and then let you go back to the public, and then we'll do like a real rebuttal at the end, if that's okay? So Adam Blank, counsel for the applicant, yeah, so what we, the updates that I've got for now, we did, we did submit some additional materials over the course of the last week. You, there was a missing survey, which you now have. Joel Verstig, the fire expert, his CV went into the record, so you could see his credentials. We did promise an updated landscaping plan that was coordinated, which you do have a colorized landscaping plan. Maybe emeline, if you don't mind pulling that. So and the, as that's coming up, I'll tell you that the, the changes on the landscaping plan was it now shows the sidewalk that we promised and the connection to the development to the sidewalk. It includes the additional heightened screening for our neighbors and a change with some of the deciduous trees to evergreens along the property lines that beef up the screening, which we had promised to the neighbors and represented to you. Matt Pop, the landscape architect, is here. If you want more on that now or on rebuttal, he'd give it to you. But that's, that's the gist of the updated landscaping.
Bronn, is this on the landscaping?
It's on what he submitted, yeah. I thought, I, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I, I listened to it. I thought it was a question from engineering about revising the drainage plan because it was aiming towards the neighbor's property.
You're a step ahead.
Oh, a step ahead, sorry.
But, but if you want to keep, I mean, I will promise I'll address it. So, so for landscaping, that was it for landscaping.
Okay, okay, sorry.
It was definitely engineering, fire, and architectural. Those were the four points. So for, 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 if you don't mind me doing architecture next. We had promised the neighbors more than you, but that we would make an effort to update the architecturals. This I. This, I think, is a little, so there was an updated submission, um, and Emmeline, if you're able to pull, there's two color photos from Oldfield Commons. And what we've agreed to do is to, uh, do a white color with the gray. Very similar to what you see at Oldfield Commons, but we've added now, uh, metal roofing above the garage and the entrances. Um, just like Oldfield Commons, and the windows are now double hung, which is what you see there. So it has a little bit more of a higher end and, uh, we've tried for, for more New England looking than what was originally proposed. Um, and so that's what, what's, the modifications are architecturally. The, um, we, we, we did reach out multiple times, both before we were here last and over the past week, to the Fire Marshal uh, and Engineering Office. Uh, with respect to engineering, uh, we were able, uh, even our engineer was able to set up a meeting with them. They gave them just yesterday morning for a meeting, but they canceled it. Uh, so we weren't able to meet with engineering. Um, uh, and I, 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 I don't know if they still have any outstanding concerns. Again, we, we believe it's fully compliant, but they we haven't, we haven't hashed out any last issues that they might have. None of them would be deal breakers, and we're happy to continue to work through whatever issue engineering may have, uh, beyond this evening, after hopefully as a condition of approval or post-approval. But we haven't had any discussions with engineering. Um, fire, um, we haven't been able to get, and Joe Verstig, who's on the, on the Zoom part of this meeting, did make, uh, a number of efforts to get in touch with the Fire Marshal's office. Um, we didn't, although we did notice that I think, um, your staff was able to get a response back from the Fire Marshal's office. Um, I think there are no, as I, it's a little hard to follow the email trail, as I, as I understand it, there are no concerns related to uh, turning radius or access, fire access, that their concern was that we put in a new fire hydrant, which we've represented to you that we would, uh, and their, their only other, uh, concern was was a hope that we might voluntarily put in a sprinklering system in the building. It's it's, they're not claiming it's required by any code. It's not required by a code. It's not, it's the industry standard. Um, but they, they like it, and at this point, we're not willing to put in a sprinklering system. Um, it's, it's not, it's not, it's not a code issue. Um, and I think don't represent that it is a code issue. And that's, again, that's my understanding. I don't think I'm misrepresenting anything. But it was a, an email dialogue. We weren't able to get a meeting with the, the Fire Marshal's office. Um, the, um, I think, I think those are the only uh, updates that I have for you. Some responses to some of the public comment, but I, I prefer to hold that till we're done with the public.
Okay, thank you. Uh, questions for Attorney Blank? Uh, Commissioner Bronn?
Can you clarify again? The comment that came in on April twenty-second from engineering said the overflow drain on the north side needs to be redirected away from the neighbor's property. The engineer wants to meet with Bill and I next week to go over this. That meeting did not happen.
No, that, no.
So that has not been resolved?
That's not been resolved, and, and, and to kind of describe it for you, what, what we're trying to understand from them is um, right now, the property has a slope to it. Water drains off the site. It drains to neighboring properties, and to some degree, it drains to King's Drive. That's allowed. It's just, that's what the existing conditions are. The town has standards for how much drainage, how much retention you have to provide on a new development. And the, the engineering department agrees that we are reducing by fifty percent the amount of water that's going to drain off of our site. So we're, we're meeting the drainage requirement, yet under certain circumstances, there will still be water that drains off the site. So, under the drainage plan, the, you know, portion of the site, because it's not the entire site, but in a portion of the site, water that drains off will drain off to a neighboring property, which is exactly what the existing conditions are, except without any retention. So it's, it's much worse under current. There will still be some drainage that goes off the site, obviously significantly less than it's currently there. And so, we're trying to understand if they don't want that, uh, any overflow going in this direction. What direction do they want it to go in? I mean, they agree that we retain as much as we're supposed to retain, so what happens to the excess? It can't, the answer can't be you retain it, because we meet the retention standards. So, so where is this overflow going? Or are they saying that they're gonna add, create some new unwritten standards for retention?
Might be a question for your drainage engineer, but it seems to me that there's overflow, if it overflows the system in a higher rainstorm, that will go directly to the neighbor, it seems like. How close is this to the neighbor? It seems like it's very tight. Very tight, uh, the impervious surface is much higher now than it was before.
Much less overflow.
Because we have to. It went into the earth, right?
No, no, it went to the neighbors.
I mean, there is earth there that can absorb it. It's now it's all impervious, like eighty, sixty or seventy percent, right?
So to a degree, yeah, sorry, I can give you a little background. So, uh, Avon Bauer for the record, I'm a professional engineer with Gusidis Engineering. And yeah, so what's happening, Emmeline, would you mind bringing up our site plan set, if you could? So i- in short, what's happening is that all the property, there is a high point on the right side and the left side of the property, as you're looking at it from the street, and it's kind of a low valley in the middle. That all drains towards the neighbor to the northeast, I believe. It goes straight through the property. That's what's happening.
Fairfield away from Westport, kind of like, right?
Uh, away from King's Drive, basically, so north a little bit. Um, and what's happening is, under existing conditions, there's a certain amount of volume that comes off our property. Under proposed conditions, uh, perfect. Could you go to the next page? That's the one. So, it's a little hard to see with the contours, but if you see the existing contours, there's a kind of a high point here, a high point here, and then another high point along King's Drive right in here. So all this is like, where the drainage is proposed, is a big bowl that we're kind of filling in to a degree. And in part of filling that in, we accounted for a, the low area, the, the storage that it had. We didn't account for any water infiltrating into the soil under existing conditions. And that's, that's just as a conservative model, because obviously water, like you said, does permeate, um, permeate through. Under the proposed conditions, we have a level spreader that's about five feet off the property here.
You point to that, I can't see.
Yeah, oh, sorry, right over here. There's a level spreader with another detention system over here. And what that's designed to do is, any overflow from those drainage systems gets collected.
Did you have the mic?
Thank, can you hear me? Excellent. Yeah, so what a level spreader is, it's just a, it's a big stone trench uh, with a pipe that discharges to it, and the whole purpose of it being so that you're not creating a point discharge, basically water just rushing out of a pipe in one spot and causing erosion. What it does is it allows the, a stone bed that's probably, I, I believe that one's three feet wide by ten feet long. And what that does is it allows the water to kind of soak into that stone bed and then gently overflow, as opposed to just kind of cascading out of that pipe. It's to avoid erosion onto neighboring properties on a long-term basis, so we're not causing any adverse, uh, long-term impact. So what's happening is that all the water is flowing right now, right here. There's a, the neighbor's residence is this little L-shaped notch. Um, and all the water from our property eventually drains out and into this area right here.
Saying before the development?
Previous, prior to the development, yes. And then after the proposed development, what we've done is we've pushed it further away from the neighbor's residence to avoid having any kind of, you know, you know, we don't want to have any drainage overflow. We're trying to make a better situation for them, so that it's further away from their house and can continue flowing down and eventually makes its way down and around, uh, back onto King's Drive further down the street. Um, and the whole purpose that we're doing, these massive detention systems, is to reduce the volume of water in that watershed by, uh, fifty percent or more under the two through one hundred year storm events. So this way, we're, even though, yes, we are continuing the natural flow of water by allowing it to flow over here, the volume of water that's going to be coming off our property is substantially reduced.
Only the first one point three inches of a storm that's being held, right?
Uh, no, we, I believe we hold in this larger detention system, I believe we hold up to the ten-year storm. And the smaller one is, I believe, the ten-year storm as well, or the five-year storm. So only under larger storm events, not on a year-to-year basis with these overflow.
The way it's designed is you hold the first one inch of rainfall.
That's part of the standards, but we do, we do actually detain more than that in this case.
Commissioner Harrison, did you have a question?
I'm, I'm set for now, thank you.
How much is the impervious surface now versus in the future? I saw, uh, the engineering letter dated April twenty-second. He says only going up, the engineer, somebody said it's only going up by seven hundred third feet. Do you know what? It seems like it's going up a lot more than that, if it's going from whatever a single-family home is to sixty percent of the site. Right now, right, it's going up from, from like twenty thousand square.
Yeah, it's roughly about twenty thousand square feet now. I don't have the existing number off the top of my head, but it is less. Uh, but that's why we're providing such a substantial, it's, it's less under current conditions, more under the proposed conditions.
If there's only one house versus.
Yeah, it's a house, a driveway, and some, I believe, some small pathways and patios, but.
So the seven hundred square feet adder is not accurate, it says that.
Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure where that came from, no.
So you know, so you don't know how much it is now, or how much it will, we know how much.
I know it'll be roughly twenty thousand at most. Uh, the exact number that we calculated was nineteen thousand, uh, eight hundred and fifty square feet.
What's wrong, thirty, thirty-two thousand square foot of sole size?
Yes.
That would be about sixty percent or so.
Uh, yes, somewhere around there.
I'm, I'm sorry, just for the benefit of the commission and the public. I'm sorry, just for the benefit of the commission and the public, um, what permit will be needed in order to build this project? And who will review it, and who will do the final authorization of the stormwater design?
So that, that will be us. We do need to meet the engineering standards, which, with my conversation with, uh, Mr. Santiago, we do meet their general standards. The really, the only question is a matter of this discharge, which.
I'm not, I'm just asking about process.
Oh, I see, yeah.
For design.
Yeah, yeah, so yeah, it would be the engineering department.
So the engineering department down at Fairfield will be issuing the final review?
Yeah, I believe as part of the zoning permit application, they do review. Is that correct, Emmeline?
Actually, they have sign-off for your building permit.
Oh, under the building permit, so it would be under the building permit, engineer.
They don't sign off.
And so, so in order to get the building permit, there will be a final review
Correct.
of the stormwater design by the town's licensed engineer.
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Okay, and, um, if your project doesn't meet that requirement, uh, will you be able to proceed with the project?
No, we would not be able to proceed, but, and that's what we.
There is a, I'm just confirming this for the benefit, the public's benefit, because a lot of question, a lot of doubt's been raised, which, uh, will those, any doubts will need to be resolved.
Correct.
Prior to you getting your, your, um, basically your, your final approval.
Yes, yeah, before we get a building permit, we will have to hash out and resolve all those items.
And if you don't?
And if we don't, we won't be able to obtain a building permit.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bronn?
Can you address in the code review, which was done February twenty-fifth, the sewer departments, W P C A said based on discharge generating activity, oil-water separators will need to comply with D E P general permit requirements. Is that applicable to this project?
Uh, we'll have to check with the building code, but I think that's for larger buildings, for the drains in the driveways. I think for smaller residences like this, it may not be necessary, but if they are required, they will be installed.
It sounds like that relates to sanitary sewer though, no?
Yes, yeah, that's all sanitary sewer.
Okay.
That can't go to a storm sewer over a concern for biotoxins.
And is there any blasting that's gonna be done? I thought I saw people talking about ledge and things like that at the last meeting.
There, there is, there, there is, there is rock that will have to be removed, but there's not, there's no plan to do blasting.
And where is the rock in relation to the neighbor's properties?
Yeah, so there's a portion of ledge over on this side that we're actually, uh, bringing the grade up in the middle too. So this building sits, uh, the first floor elevation is about level with the top of the ledge, so we won't have to blast, or excuse me, we won't have to hammer out any ledge in this area. Uh, there's some ledge in this section here that we do plan to hammer out. Uh, like I said, we don't anticipate needing any blasting, and it does drop off pretty significantly. Uh, for instance, we are level, uh, we are currently level with the top of our, or our first floor is level with the top of this, um, knoll here. And then as it slopes down to, I believe, about halfway through the building, we are no longer, we're, we're now filling in order to get that building in.
So you've done test pits or drilling to see where the rock is?
Not drilling, we did dig with an excavator, yeah.
So you know where the bedrock is or where the ledge is?
Yes, yeah, we, we've.
You will not have to blast at all, or you don't have it?
No, we won't have to blast, we'll be able to hammer out the ledge that's there.
And does that, does the level of excavation you have to do require an underground geol- hydro geological survey or no?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any final questions from the commission on the revisions only? Okay, uh, we will go back to public comment. Um, Bernie Green, if there are anything you want to start just on the revised documents?
No, uh, if I may, Ms. I may, uh, uh, Chairman, uh, if I could defer to the public, I do have some brief remarks, but I think in fairness, I'd like to hear from the community, and I know the commission does as well.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, I think there are some folks who spoke last week. I'd like to start with, uh, folks in the room who have not already spoken. Um, if people spoke last week and have comments about any of the changes, you'll get to speak again on those, but, um, first come, first served, anyone who's here in the room, if you'd like to speak, just, uh, come up. Sit down, say your name and address.
My name is August Sarno. I'm at, uh, reside at fifty-five Mill Hill Road. Uh, my house is on the corner of King's Drive and Mill Hill Road. Um, yeah, I made some comments, uh, last time, but I, uh, also submitted a video, uh, of the traffic um, on, that was taken on April twenty-fourth. And I submitted that the twenty-eighth, uh, for the meeting and requested that it be, um, brought forward and played.
I don't think I could, I don't think there was a video attachment to your email.
Yeah, there was, yeah.
Like, there wasn't that I could open. There were two other videos that were submitted that showed traffic, and those were saved in the neighbor correspondence file.
Okay, I, I do have something on my, um, computer. It's, it's really not uh, working up on the screen, but I could play that.
Can we try to figure, I s- I saw the two short videos also.
It's a five-minute video, it's not very long.
I mean, I'm happy to play those other two videos.
After, after his email, at the bottom, there's a, there's a link way at the bottom. I was able to view it.
There's a link on the bottom of the email, just to click.
Let's see.
Yeah, that's it. The second one from the bottom.
He's thinking.
Yeah, you can also enlarge that up on the right-hand top of that video. There's a little arrow which enlarges the, uh, there you go. And I think it's starting now. This was taken on the twenty-fourth of April. The time was four forty-five in the afternoon, and it ran for about five minutes. There's a volume too, you can, um, adjust on that if you like.
I think it, it doesn't.
So, is there, is there additional commentary you want to share?
Just to mention that, um, the, the traffic on King's Drive pretty much begins about three thirty and runs through about six thirty. And the reason for so much traffic, it seems like cars coming off the post-road bypass the ninety-five entrance ramp towards Hartford and take King's Lane as a shortcut. And, uh, we were getting all the traffic because these cars are diverting to the next entrance on ninety-five, or they take a left here, uh, onto Pequod over the bridge. And you'll notice, uh, as the cars go by, uh, there's a Fairfield Police car uh, that has intercepted various cars that come by because they're not stopping at the stop sign, which is located at the ends of King's Lane, turning right onto King's Drive. They're bypassing that. And the officers have been, uh, handing out violations uh, probably from March twenty-fifth through April twenty-fifth, about a thirty-day period. Uh, they've handed out forty eight traffic tickets. Uh, because of lacking to stop at that stop sign. So this, this traffic typically occurs for three hours or so, Monday through Friday. Um, sometimes it's more severe, sometimes it's less severe, but um. When I counted the number of vehicles going through. There are approximately forty eight cars in a five minute period that travel. Uh, through here on King's Drive. Uh, the impact is significant because uh, the proposed development. Um, the traffic report that was submitted does not appear to include any sidewalks. Additional sidewalks along King's Drive. Uh, we have um. Proposes a, a three bedroom unit, ten units total. And it is estimated that you could have anywhere between twenty five and thirty five young children. Needing to take a school bus or walking uh, down King's Drive to another location. That's available, but this is right at the height of. The buses that would come back and return the students uh, to their um, to their residence.
Chairman, can I ask a question of this witness? Has to do with the neighborhood and the walking places.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I have a question for you. Mr. Sarno, um, in the traffic report, it indicated that. This is one third of a mile away from the train station. Presumably that would be the Southport train station.
Could be.
And how would you walk from this location to the Southport train station? Is there a sidewalk or is there a safe way of walking to the train station?
Uh, there is a walk that starts, I believe, on the bridge, the Pequod. But once you cross that bridge. There is no sidewalk that goes towards the train station.
You could get to P's Road from here, right? Isn't there a dead end?
What is it?
Can you get to like P's Road and down to the post road in Westport from here? Or you'd have to cross over.
Not a dead end.
You have to go to the post road, right?
Yeah, this, this uh, King's Drive, you can take a left on King's Lane and then go out.
The post road.
The post road.
And there's no sidewalk there.
No sidewalk.
And how would you get to the train station from there?
You'd have to follow the road. Uh, many people.
Possible to me, but do you feel it's.
Many people come down uh, from Mill Hill. And take the, the actual walk to the train station on the road.
Seems dangerous to me.
Okay, uh, Mr. Sarno, uh, I think we have your additional commentary. Um, I, I believe you spoke last, uh, the last meeting.
Wanted to uh, just hand out. To each of the members because I, I um. We also looked at other items. That pertain directly to this project. We first talked about the video, which uh. You have seen. And in summary, that would um. As I mentioned, there are about fifty five cars that are moving along there in a five minute period. Which would result in eleven vehicles per minute. That would total six hundred and sixty vehicles per hour.
Mr. Sarno, could I just interrupt you for a second? How, um, I know we have this document that you're reading from in the record. How much longer do you have?
Maybe five minutes, yeah, that long at all. Uh, traffic violations, I mentioned there were forty five tickets in a span of.
Are you, is the rest of your commentary just reading from the paper?
Well, I think uh, public should be aware of this too.
Right, but, but, uh, hang on one second. I had indicated in the beginning is that I wanted to start with folks who did not speak last week.
Because nobody that raised their hand.
That was pretty quick. You jumped out there pretty quick.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I just have a couple items I just wanna check in quickly. Uh, handicap accessibility, uh, we believe the building code requires. One of the units, which is a four unit development on the site, at least one of those has to be handicap accessible. Uh, in terms of emergency fire truck access. The material you have has a plan that actually shows parking. Uh, if the resident desire to park in front of their garage. And if that happens, it's also illustrated on one of the architect's elevation. That would eliminate emergency access. Through two of those buildings. So they wouldn't be able to get fire trucks in or turn around. So I think that's uh, in a very important consideration. And the last item deals with a floor plan, which uh, doesn't seem to agree with the grading plan because. What's called out in the, as a basement. In the buildings that are having three units. There doesn't seem to be access because the grades are up almost one story. In the rear of the building as opposed to the front of the building. The uh, elevation of the garage on those three unit buildings. It just, I think it's around seventy three feet. The rear elevation is eighty five and a half, eighty two and a half. Which is like nine feet higher in the back, but the plans indicate it level. So there has to be a significant. Issue in terms of how do you do that basement? And what effect it would have on the living room area above, if anything. My summary indicates that the development does not provide emergency access. Current traffic presents a life safety issue. No sidewalk, sidewalks are currently provided for the safety of residents and children. And traffic violations were recently recorded within the past thirty five days. Any questions I have been collecting?
Commissioner Brown, we, this is, we need to take it to some other folks, can we just?
I just need to have him clarify the, the attachments, what, what he added to these drawings versus what was in the drawings? If you could just go through each one and say what his markings are versus what.
Yeah. Yeah, the first, first drawing indicates.
Could you identify the first drawing?
Quickly, please.
First drawing indicates the fire trucks coming into the site.
And what did you add to the drawing?
I added what the architect had shown. He showed cars parked outside the garage area.
Blue crosshatched rectangles or?
Yes, that's correct. That's in blue cross.
And the next one shows the face of the three story townhouse building.
The next one has the elevation of the building with the car parked outside.
Not, you didn't add anything to that one?
No.
Okay, the next one shows site plan.
The next one shows a site plan and I had mentioned the two buildings. That are three units each. In the back, I circle the finished grade. In the back, which is indicated at eighty two point five feet. Whereas the front is seventy three feet. But the plant shows a level plan and it's not possible to do that.
Where, where's your circle? Is it in the building around the verbiage that's?
The circle is outside the building.
Oh, I see.
In the rear.
Thank you.
All right, can we, let's wrap this up, please.
And then the last one, did you make comments on the last one?
Quickly.
Yes, the last, last one indicates the rear of building three. Where the drawings show the grade here at seventy three, but the grade is actually up here. So I'm not sure if this would even be possible.
That's the second.
It would be below grade.
Then the last one shows some crosshatches handwritten with a pen.
Yeah, that's very similar because the side elevation would have to slope towards the rear.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone who did not speak last week who's here? Who's interested in speaking? Is there anyone joining remotely or by phone who would like to speak and did not already speak?
Thank you, uh, once again, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the commission staff. Uh, my name is Joel Green. I appear before you again this evening on behalf of the Sasquatch Association for Southport Improvement. Uh, with me is John Turritson, who is the Vice President of uh, the Association. So, you know, we, we talk about Fairfield as a town of neighborhoods and through these applications and this application in particular, we're learning about another neighborhood in Fairfield. And obviously, there's a close neighborhood and they've uh, obviously all shown up here out of concern for this application. Uh, that is confronting their neighborhood and it is, in fairness, uh. An application that represents a significant and jarring change in their neighborhood, but. Uh, we spend a lot of time in Fairfield, uh, and I know this commission has spent an inordinate amount of time dealing with. Current uh, situation with eight dash thirty G applications and I think. It's a worn but true pha- phrase that we need affordable housing in Fairfield and here we are. Uh, but once again, this is a really um. Difficult application for these neighbors. Uh, Sasquatch hired me, retained me and our firm to advocate for these neighbors. Uh, but once again, we find ourselves and I will mirror the comments that I know will come from this commission. We find ourselves in the context of an eight dash thirty G application. So uh, we appreciate the dialogue that we've had with the applicant and we feel. And really, we've had good fake discussions and we have made some progress. And I think in the context of this application, we appreciate the efforts of the applicant to address sidewalks. A more robust landscaping plan, dealing with the architectural plans. And uh, we have once again asked the applicant to consider um, a reduced development with six units. Uh, which we feel is more in scale and certainly is sort of still inconsistent, but it's more in scale. But uh, under the circumstances, again, uh, we recognize the sort of economic realities. So we um, appreciate the concessions that the applicant has made in this context. And under these circumstances, uh, you know, it, with those concessions, we did agree that we would not oppose this application. Uh, but, you know, we just want to acknowledge the gravity of the situation. We thank the commission for the time that you've taken and uh. We're sure that you'll uh. Uh, apply the, the laws that exist on this and uh, ensure your ruling and thank you for your patience. I don't know if you have any questions?
Hang on, somebody wants to speak.
So, thank you, Attorney Green.
Thank you.
We know if it's a new.
I don't believe that she spoke last time, but she did submit a letter.
Okay, uh, I'll, I'll give the folks in the room one more chance to comment just on uh, revisions, but we have one person calling in.
Hi, yes, my name is Laura Saganovich. I live at one eighty seven King's Drive. Um, and it was just mentioned during this meeting, talking about the safety to walk to the train station. I have an eleven year old stepdaughter, a one year old son and another child on the way actually. Um, and it is definitely not safe to walk on the street or even to downtown Southport where the train station is. Um, I've tried it because I do wanna get my kids out of the house. Um, so yeah, I just, I wanted to, I know I already mentioned everything else in my email that I wanted to say, but. I did just wanna add that since it was a question that was brought up.
Thank you. Does anyone in the room uh, who already spoke want to comment just on the revisions? Please come up. After her. Try to limit your comments to the revisions.
Yeah. Um, again. Uh, my name is Helena Coatsworth. I live at one twenty King's Drive. Um. Uh, I'm looking at some of the revisions about um, uh. The drainage, well, the landscaping, but more importantly, the drainage. Um, I'm not sure if. The survey that was done or by which their plans were drawn took into account. That when the per- the property was purchased, they removed dozens and dozens of very old trees. Which suck up a significant amount of rainwater and that was substantial. The entire back end of the property was very densely uh, wooded with severe overgrowth and very old trees. The new owners came in and took every single one of them out except for one. And then a couple along the street line, they were prevented from doing so by the uh, town tree warden. Um, I will, uh, would like to again reiterate my concerns about the drainage on the property. Uh, just today, when I looked at it from Google Earth, uh, you can now see the property cleared and there were two massive puddles. In the property that were there for weeks at a time throughout the summer at various occasions. Um, it was I that mentioned about the ledge and I'd like to just say that there underneath the, you know, the little bit of topsoil that's there, it's just stone. And so I'm not sure how uh, sufficient. In fact, I'm, I'm wholly convinced that any of the plans that have been put forth will be significantly insufficient. To, to deal with that stormwater a- and furthermore to the neighbor to the back. Um, last week he was away in Columbia and could not be here. Um, and I'm not sure, they're more recent owners. I'm not sure if they've ever seen the type of flooding that they know could be coming their way. I think a drainage. Um, of, I believe it was si- uh, cited at three feet by ten feet. Is not nearly sufficient to catch the type of uh, impervious surface runoff that's now gonna be created on that property. The entire property um, had, had something on it before that could at least try to mitigate the rainwater, mostly the trees and shrubs that were there. Um. I would like to a- also agree with the idea that there's absolutely no way you can walk safely to Southport Center. There is no way you can walk safely to Mill Hill School, um, and you can certainly not get to any of the uh, cluster of stores where People's Bank is and. Um, where P's Avenue was, as was cited previously. Um. I'd like to also point out in that video of the traffic, my house is about two thirds of the way up that very long line. And um, as I said before, it's impossible for me to take a left if I'm coming out in any time between three and seven P M. When I actually printed out all of the survey data from the company that did it, Mitchell Traffic Engineering. And I, it, it wasn't exactly cherry picked, but it was certainly convenient how some of the numbers uh, really only rely on a nugget of information. Where I can see by the numbers here that there is hour after hour after hour of hundreds of cars coming down our street. Um, I'd also like to mention that when I looked at the speed computations and the values that were entered into it, it was laughable. As you can see from the, the, the video that was there, a whole bunch of the cars are going less than ten miles an hour. So where do you get the twenty three miles an hour, twenty two point nine seven? That's being made up for by the fact that there are numbers of cars going in the fifty mile an hour and fifty five in excess of mi- so. As much as you can have numbers like that that show, yeah, there's not a speed issue here, it's demonstr- demonstrably not representative of what we have going on on the street. Um. I'm not sure, oh. I also wanted just to point out that in their survey of peak hour counts, not only did they misquote themselves when they summarized it in this tiny little convenient box with very little um. Sort of input about where that data came from, but when I actually compared it to their numbers, they didn't, they misquoted themselves. And here they have a calculated rate of expected, expected to generate approximately a hundred and twenty two vehicle trips during a peak. The rates show that this development is expected to generate a hundred and twenty two vehi- vehicle trips during a typical twenty four hour day with nine vehicles. Two coming in and two exiting during the morning commuter, uh, commuter peak hour. And so it's ridiculous to even think that that's reality. And then eleven vehicles, seven entering and four exiting. I don't know how two more came in. Anyway, during the afternoon commuter peak hour, that doesn't uh, compensate for anything to do with bus pickups uh, a- at all. So if you're thinking that there are ten double garages, these people will need to afford to pay for these units. Presumably they'll be on dual incomes. The majority of these two cars per unit are going to be leaving every day. So one last thing I'd like to talk about, and when I see all these uh, drawings that have come up by the developers, they're very conveniently, my property, I mean, it's how the drawings are drawn, but my. my property, I mean, it's how the drawings are drawn, but my property very conveniently doesn't show my driveways in any of them. Now, I know that there has been whatever steps taken to deal with sightlines as coming around the bend. But I don't know, and I'm not seeing any evidence that there's any consideration taken for how I get out of my driveway specifically. I've already fed up with the traffic that I can't get out of my own driveway. But now I'm going to be faced with an excess of ten to maybe twenty cars coming and going down that street. When they're coming, where the driveway is, which I will vehemently oppose in whatever development plans get revised, because it needs to be moved around onto the more straight line of the street. As it stands now, it's coming onto a blind corner, like a serious blind corner. So, as I pull out, I look right, I look left, hardly anybody coming left, it's always from the right. And as I look around, there's cars, I mentioned this last week, I'll make it brief, coming around the corner too quickly for me to either, it's like do or die, you either have to gun it and get out into traffic and make the move to save your behind, or I have to slam on the brakes and as I said, I think my dog has ended up in the front seat because of that very need more times than I can count, poor thing. But when I approach that, where they're proposing to put the driveway, now there will be an S U V or a whatever, or maybe even another school bus. So, I'm, the drainage is my big issue and the intent for where the driveway is being proposed, not only is it, and the additional, additional traffic, not only is it going to make an already bad situation on that street, especially on that section of street, more dangerous, but it's certainly going to make it increasingly more difficult for me to actually just get out onto the road. I won't be able to see and it's already dangerous now. So, I would ask the committee and I would ask the developers and the designers to please take a look at that and reconsider where they would like to propose that driveway be put, because where it is now is on a dangerously blind curve and I'd like to not be hit by a car. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. There's one gentleman in the back.
My name, my name is Ed Zigmont. I reside at sixty King's Drive. A few, few notes, it was brought up several times about the fire access. People are going to park there. Snow is going to be plowed into that turnaround, which is minimal at best. Who's going to enforce it? It's private property. That's a concern. Drainage, my property is the lowest of the neighborhood. The adjoining property, as was mentioned, when it flows through, flows through his backyard, comes across, flows through mine. The retention, it was mentioned as far as standing water, it's a bowl. The retention system that they're, they're designing is a bowl within a bowl. It's going to fill up. So, it's going to go into the four by, what was it, the three by ten stone bed. It's just going to keep on flowing. So, you know, that, that's a concern. The ledge, major concern. How about the adjoining property? That ledge is joint, is, is on the property line. What about the damage to adjoining property? Who's responsible for that? That's, that's some of my concerns. Thank you.
Kenneth Graham, pro bono attorney for the Ukraine America of, of Southport. I'm not going to repeat my statement from last week nor go into the six exhibits on file. But the bottom line is this, normally the commission considers traffic. Because the Fairfield Traffic Authority Authority received a consumer complaint alleging dangerous public safety conditions, the engineering went part, went out, did their own independent traffic study, substantiated that complaint, according to the chairman, I watched the date of their special meeting, which is on file, and concluded that there was a public safety situation. So, besides your normal review of traffic considerations, we would respectfully request that you scrutinize the traffic issue, because you will find the smoking gun, the finding of the danger to public safety in the exhibits we filed last week. I just wanted to reiterate that point. Thank you.
Did you submit that traffic, that was definitely done by the town?
It's in the exhibits. It's from the Fairfield Engineering Department.
Anyone else in the room wish to speak?
Thank you again for your time. I appreciate it. I tried to speak quickly. I did speak previously, but I just wanted to bring it across.
Let's become the microphone. Sorry.
Microphone.
Hold it up.
Is this better?
It's also a pickup for the train.
Yes, just so they can.
I just, I just want to speak again. My name is Mary Beth Fargus. I live at one eighty-six King's Drive. I'm to the west of the proposed development. Just imagine yourselves, Mr. Ford mentioned how he lived in Fairfield, then moved to another area, then came back to Fairfield, you know, was able to afford to own in Fairfield. So, the same with me. So, I was originally born and raised in Springfield, but all my relatives are from, grandparents. We were so lucky to buy a home in Fairfield, specifically as Mr. Coco had stated, on the highway side or highway people. Yes, we are, in fact. So, sort of, I guess there's a big distinction between people on the water versus the highway side. But I was very proud to have this, this, this property and to, you know, work really hard on the landscape, the lands, my husband and I worked tremendously hard. Just imagine yourselves purchasing a home, being thrilled to have this little home on a plot of land, and a developer comes in, knocks down your trees, pulls and knocks down and pulls out the, you know, there are nails and pins put in when you have your land surveyed, which I had to have done three times in preparation for this whole situation. The pins were pulled out, they were broken, the trees were knocked down. I have pictures of everything. And now I see, you know, the, not only approached, but completely kind of, you know, gone on my property, but construction worker dumpsters all over. I asked Mr. Coco, I emailed him, can you please remove them? He said he would, he never did. So, I don't trust this project. My basic, you know, I'm, I'm a trusting person. I'm a nurse. I mean, that could be, you know, anyone. It could be a janitor, but I'm a trusting person. Doesn't matter who you are in life, other than the fact that you're, you're decent, you're good to your fellow man, you're good to your neighbors. I think those are very important features and intrinsic value of a person. But to have trees cut down, he instructed his men, I, I believe, to just run across my, you know, property all the time and cause ruckus while I'm trying to work. The pleas were called out several times. They issued, I don't know what it's called, the summons or a warning for him to not harass me or his men. So, why would I, why would I think this would all work out to the neighborhood's advantage, let alone me? You know, being a nurse, I had to get out of the driveway. The trucks were parked near my driveway. Jim Went was, you know, parked in my driveway, surveying my land at one point in time. And I said, I've got to get out. I've got, I've got to go to the hospital. You know, we all feel that way, a devotion to our jobs, not just nurses, but school teachers, you know, lawyers, everybody. Why can't we live in peace? Why could this project not be reduced in size to a comfortable situation? So, traffic to go, go by, it's found itself. What if someone gets killed? Would they sue the town for allowing this project to take effect when in fact we brought across a lot of safety concerns? You know, I'm sort of, I'm still, you know, I'm thinking about our town, in fact, not just myself, but my neighbors, my town. There was a huge car crash on that blind corner when we first moved in. Ran out in the middle of the night, this kid had hit the telephone pole. Him and his girlfriend, they had been drinking and then we pulled him out of the car, we helped him out and he, he did fine. But I think these types of things could exist many times. A car just passed me on the left side when I was trying to drive on the right side, ran this tiny street. You have ninety-six units being erected less than a quarter of a mile away. Those will have, I would imagine, two-person capacity. So, there you go, one nine, you know, hundred ninety-two people coming there as well, coming out of their driveways. I, I think this is a big concern. Oh, there was a truck, I think it was methylene oxide that exploded on the highway. We were all instructed, this was several years ago, about, along, quite a while ago. We're instructed to leave to evacuate our homes because we're too close to the highway. So, this project is in very close proximity to the highway. That property, Pam Norman's property, which was originally Wanda Messick's property, I had actually allowed her to use a portion of my land, because that woman was an elderly person. She asked me, could I take a little piece of your land, go up and down my driveway, because my groceries are too difficult to get on the other side? I said, sure. I did that for like twenty-five years for her. So, now, that was for a, a, a senior citizen. Now we have this situation. This isn't a senior citizen, maybe it is, I don't know. But I'm concerned if there's a problem on the highway and there's, there's a problem, it seems, every couple of months, where I run on the ridge to see if I could help somebody who's either done something on the highway, they're stuck on the highway or they're running through my yard. If there's a crash of like methylene oxide or one of those toxic fumes where you have to evacuate, how are you going to evacuate all these people? This isn't so far-fetched. It happened to us. I don't know if you, any of you gentlemen or women have had to evacuate your home at three in the morning because of a truck blow up with some toxic flames. You could look, you know, that up. We didn't even know where to go, you know, a number of families were evacuated at that point in time. I have a lot of concerns. It may just go up anyway. I don't know. I don't know if I'll stay in that situation. I don't want people parking me up so badly that I can't get where I need to go. And nor could emergency vehicles. We keep talking about fire trucks. And when there's a nine-one-one medical call or a concern of a whatever family dispute or some sort of a disturbance of the peace, you not only will get a fire truck, you get the police cruiser with one or two police officers, the E M Ts with mostly a paramedic, if it's a cardiac or asthma, you know, a serious pulmonary or cardiovascular emergency. You have to park immediately three major emergency vehicles as well as other people and other paraphernalia that they have to drag in. And you need room to make a path for these things. So, I'm speaking more of a passionate medical expertise type person, but I really didn't like the fact that he really totally violated so much of my space. And I, I've lived with this for a year. I, I called the town a bunch of times and, you know, they said, well, you know, you could hire an attorney to get those trees put back up. Really? Those trees were like, you know, a hundred years old. So, the pollinators are all gone, you know? I mean, if you want to think of the environment, pollinators and how good they are for the environment, they're all gone. That could have been a beautiful community garden. I wish I had bought it. I wish I could have afforded to buy it. But anyway, I mean, to, to buy a piece of that property, point seven acres for seven hundred thousand dollars, I think he paid. And he told me, Andy Piarska, I'm good, we're going to put eighty units in here and we're going to make you all miserable till you get out. I don't think that's a very nice way to go about as a developer. If he had spoken in some other fashion, I think that would have been a respectful plan. I would have thought differently. But I don't trust, I'm actually afraid of this man. I don't know. I, I don't trust what may happen to this whole situation. Thank you for being here, for voting your time to us.
Last call. Anyone wish to be heard on this item?
Evening. My name is Tom Saganovich and I live at one eighty-seven King's Drive. I just want to reiterate the...
Can you just keep your comments?
Very brief.
We have other applications tonight.
Just want to reiterate the, the safety concerns and the, and the walkability of this area is not good. I love to take the train into the city. I work in the city every day and I drive in because there's one for the train station. It's not safe. I do have family. I can't walk my kids up and down the street. I don't feel it's safe. And I've worked in real estate operations and development my entire career. This project is grossly oversized for this lot, for this site. And it's, it's a danger to our...
Else? Anyone else joining online that wishes to be heard on this item?
I don't think so.
Okay, turning blank. I will close the public comment portion of this item and go to turning blank for rebuttal.
Thank you. So, try to respond to the, the comments that we heard in kind of no particular order, but maybe I'm going to start sort of towards the end first, which was just, there were some comments regarding some personality disagreements or interactions between my clients and one of the neighbors. My clients have a very different story, but I don't think he said, she said is going to make much of a difference as to what the plans submitted are, whether or not they comply with eight dash thirty G. So, without, I, I, I'm going to just pass on that personality fight for now and, and try to focus on the mirrors. But I, I know my clients are upset, so I wanted to make sure that's out there. So, so putting that aside, going back to the last meeting, there was a question about preserving a stone wall at the front of the property because of some grading that's going to go on. The stone wall is going to have to be removed. However, when we, when we relandscaped afterwards, we'll look and see if there's ways to reconstruct stone wall along the portion of the frontage. The, the, or a number of comments. Actually, let me switch to the, the traffic. Whenever you hear that, that the traffic engineer, you know, they, they made something up, they, they lied, they cheated you. As the lawyer, it always gets me really nervous because you're like, oh, well, maybe, maybe, maybe they were giving us the wrong information. But I think in fact, if you actually look at what our traffic engineer submitted, you'll see that he identified at the peak hour, he had, I believe, it's right around four hundred and seventy-five cars, four, four hundred and seventy-four out, four hundred and seventy-four cars he had in the peak hour. So, that works out to about forty cars in five minutes. It's actually, I think, thirty-nine cars in the five-minute period over a peak hour. And you had a video that showed our count was about forty-three or forty-four cars in about five minutes. So, it is a little bit different, but that's not an hour-long video and I would call that within the margin of error. I mean, it's pretty close to what we submitted to you and what we represented were in fact the traffic volumes on a peak hour. And that is a significant amount of traffic over that hour-long period. It's definitely not an all-day experience and I drive that road. Every time I come up here, I go through it just to see and, and, and I've yet at six o'clock hit any traffic on it. I, I'm confident that at five o'clock, there's a heck of a lot of traffic, but it is a short period of time. It's a lot of traffic and it is there without our development. We didn't create that traffic. We didn't create that issue. And what we're proposing is we're proposing sidewalks along our frontage where none exists currently. That is definitely an upgrade from existing conditions. And this traffic that we will generate was estimated at five to ten cars in a peak hour period. Not over the day, but in the peak hour periods, five or ten cars. That's a car every six minutes or so. So, one of those cars in that video would, would come from our development. In the grand scheme of things, this is a drop in the bucket. It is certainly not us creating a safety issue. Are we, are we potentially adding a couple of seconds of delay to an already busy roadway? Sure. But we're not creating a, a, a health or safety issue by adding a few more cars to a well-traveled roadway. The, the... There was a, a comment was raised about while these ten units could generate twenty or thirty school kids and where will all the buses go and where will the kids go? Again, we have the path on our, on our, on our property and sidewalk, so there's a safe place for the students to wait for school buses. Again, that's not really a valid criterion under eight dash thirty G, but, but even if it does, on your draft P O C D, you, which we've talked about in other projects and I know you're familiar with, you have done pretty good projections as to what developments generate in terms of school kids. And a development of this size is projected to generate between one and two. And a development of this size is projected to generate between one and two school kids based on Fairfield's historical uh, experience. So it's not a whole lot of school kids that are gonna be coming from this project. We're not talking about busloads of kids. Um, one or two kids who can now wait on a sidewalk that doesn't exist currently. Um, you've heard that we're not gonna be blasting. Um, we, we would absolutely support an, an effort by the town. Uh, or by neighbors to install sidewalks along the entire roadway and, and all the way to the train station, but that's not our project. We're putting it in front of our site and, and I think that's uh, quite reasonable. The um. The fire department uh, access, uh, again, you heard from uh, Mr. Verstig. You've got a letter from him, uh, and really from your own fire marshal expressing no concerns with respect to fire uh, access. Um, uh, the, some of the concerns raised about cars blocking access, if that's a concern of the fire marshal. We, we're happy to have that as a condition of approval and certainly we're gonna comply with whatever the fire marshal uh, says for the site. But there's, there's obviously nothing, no, no real evidence in the record that there's a uh, fire hazard created by this uh, development. Um, the uh, there was a concern raised about the, the project having um, too many stairs and not being ADA compliant. Um, and, and the, the units, um, the, the ADA rules uh, do require that, that at least some of, in this case, all of the units are ADA convertible. They're adaptable. They're not built with elevators, but they have the potential to have elevators put in. And that's the way the ADA rules work. Again, when you go through the, the permitting process. If we're not compliant, we're not getting building permits, but, but they don't, the buildings don't need elevators. That is not in fact, any, it's not a, it's not a, an ADA rule. Um, the. Um. Uh, Miss, and I, I may mispronounce her name, but Miss uh, Bootsworth, one of our immediate uh, neighbors. Um, she had a concern about using, and she spoke, I think twice now, but, but a concern about using her seasonal shower. Um, that we are gonna be looking in at her seasonal shower and she would no longer be able to, to use that. Um, and uh, my clients have said that they, they with, with, obviously with her consent. Will, will come up with a screening solution for her on her property. Um, so that that's not an issue for her. Again, she's gotta be willing to allow them to come on the property and to come up with a solution, but we'll, we'll take care of that. Um, the um, and, and I should also just point out the, the. The, the buildings that we're proposing on that property line, your zoning regs. Allow for a seven-foot setback on one side yard. Okay? We're proposing eighteen feet at that side yard. So well, again, we don't have to comply with the reg, but we're well, we're well off of what your reg would permit for, for that side. You have other aggregate setback rules, but, but we're, we're about eighteen feet next to her home. Um, also, our structure actually, I'm gonna, are you able to pull up the color landscaping plan? It may be easiest to see on that. And as, as that's coming up, again, you know, there was this talk that we're gonna be throwing shade and kind of towering over her home. Our, our, our proposed the, the unit, and it's the four there. And you'll see that it's sort of strategically placed uh, sideways, but I know we couldn't figure out how to twist it. That's fine. We'll look sideways, but the longer building. Yeah, you can see off of our site where the two existing homes are, that they're actually. Uh, on that side, yeah, they're, they're off the edges of our property. So like our building is set so that it's not actually right on top of the neighbor's property. Um, and our height, that's our tallest building. It's, it's around thirty-four feet or so. Your zoning reg would allow thirty-two feet. It's not much taller again, and the other ones are lower, but it's not much taller than what, what your regs would allow uh, anyway. Um, the, and based somewhere the, the south and the north, which you can see, it's really not gonna be creating uh, much of any shade. For even her yard, let alone her, her house. Um, there was a concern about us impacting her sightlines. Um, we're actually re-grading to make the sightlines better. That's, obviously we're doing that to help our property, but it's gonna, as a side effect, it will help hers. There's, there's no worsening of any, of any sightlines uh, by virtue of this project. The um. The, the, I think maybe even at the end, if, I'll have you talk just for a minute about drainage. Um, we, we talked about it, maybe we'll add, talk a little bit more. Um, we. We also heard um. From uh, let's just see. Oh, the, the gr- a grading issue about the, the doors and the basement and the ground floor. Um, we, we've looked at it and think that all works out fine. Um, if there's any issue at the building permit level that, that a door needs to be moved because of a grading in the backyard. We'll, we'll, we'll deal with that, but, but we don't, we don't see any real issue on uh, grading. Um. The. Um, the Ukrainian club, uh, they did submit some materials. Um, and there was a, a meeting with the, the, the traffic commissioner, traffic authority. Um, I'm not aware of any like traffics, real traffic study having been conducted. Other than the one that we conducted and, and it's, it's, it's not, it's not part of any materials or anything I've been able to find uh, online that the, that the town has conducted. Um, the um. Uh, I guess the owners of one eighty-seven King's Drive uh, had some opposition to the project. Um, and described for this uh, King's Drive as a, as a, as a small street. Uh, and they didn't want to have ten houses there uh, because it would be, you know, ma- too many houses for their neighborhood. Um, and I, I will note that they had, and I think, I'm gonna, are you able to pull up? We have a photo from that property.
From which one?
From one eighty-seven King's Drive in Ariel.
Just um, I had a.
From the G I S. And they, they were complaining about the traffic from their house and it's a little small, but you'll see. They're on the corner there of the post road directly across from that thirty thousand square foot office building uh, on the edge of the King's Drive. And, and admittedly, for one stretch of King's Drive, it's a number of single-family houses. But you got an office building, the Ukrainian club and, and Route One right there. Um, they bought that house in twenty twenty when all of that was pre-existing, so it's kind of hard to say that, you know, we thought we were buying at a, a little side street in the village. And, and low and behold, there's gonna be a ten-unit development that's gonna have five or ten cars in the peak hour. And that totally changes what we thought we were buying into. Uh, again, I, I, I think it's gonna be pretty darn similar. Um, the um. Uh, scale issues, um, obviously we, we talked about, I'm not gonna go in much detail on that. That was talked on in, in our opening that um. It's really not a valid consideration under eight dash thirty G and we're in line with the scale uh, of what you've previously uh, approved. Um, the um, there was uh, a. Uh, request by Attorney Green and his clients that we cut the development down to um, uh, six units. And um, in, in, to be frank with you, um. We think this pro- this application ought to be approved and we would like it to be approved, sooner the better. But, but, but notwithstanding that, we have also agreed uh, to continue to work with his clients. See if we can come up with a smaller, like a six-unit development that may work. Um, we've got to work out the details of financially how that could work and what those units might look like and, and, and make sure that. He and his clients agree with it, we agree with it, and if we get to that point, ultimately. It's gonna come back to the town for some form of an a- approval. Um, but, but we're advancing that. Um, but, but we're also obviously advancing this and this is sort of what we originally set out uh, to do. Um, the um. The uh, finally, I think my final. Two, two quick points, um, and then I'll just let, let Aven talk briefly. Um, Commissioner Randolph, you asked us at the last meeting about whether our traffic engineer could prepare something about other ways to make King's Drive. Uh, ideas for King's Drive in general. Um, and we haven't forgotten about that. Um, in process, we do, and I, I, and I'm sort of insisting on this, but, but our, our experts still working on it is that. I don't believe that's appropriate as part of our record for our hearing in this application. But we are committing to upon the completion of the public hearing, having him getting that finalized as informational. Just for the commission's benefit, but, but not part of our, a public record. Um, and, and then um, uh, I will let Aven talk about the, the engineering and I, again, I don't believe you've heard substantial evidence that. There are, that denial would be necessary to protect any substantial public interest in health or safety. Aven, if you want to just touch briefly on a couple of those engineering.
Yeah, good evening. Aven Bauer, professional engineer with Crusidius Engineering. Uh, just one of the major concerns that came up was that there was existing ponds on the property. This was something that we did take into account during our existing conditions drainage model. And as part of the overflow that goes to the neighboring properties, that ponding was accounted for, which means that we're holding back water under existing conditions. So that fifty percent reduction in volume under the hundred-year storm event is actually after that ponding occurred in existing conditions. And then the proposed is fifty percent less than that uh, under all of our proposed with all the new drainage structures. We don't really anticipate any adverse impacts to neighboring properties and we do believe that this could be developed in a very safe manner.
I, I think, obviously the folks to the team is here. If you have questions, otherwise that ends our presentation.
Commissioner.
I have one question. I think um, you know, a neighbor raised concerns about fire trucks and their access. And then over considering, so Mr. Sarno, right, one of the neighbors mentioned he had concerns about fire trucks and their ability to access the property now.
Sure.
For all intents and purposes, I think we can expect fire trucks just push through cars should they be in the way. But as it relates to just general circulation, I had some concerns about the ability for residents to get in and out of their property and it is. Typical to see people park in front of the garages and it seems all but impossible on most of these units. So we're just curious about uh, any response you might have to that, or thoughts about circulation? Is there any?
Yeah, we've talked about, about not allowing residents to park in front of the garage.
So yeah, yeah, we do, we, each of those garages has two parking spaces and there are cer- six accessory parking spaces on the property. Which is greater than two and a half parking spaces per unit. Uh, so we don't really anticipate any vehicles being parked in front of the units. And I believe one of the other concerns was people parking in between the two buildings, but that's gonna be heavily striped and strictly labeled as a fire turnaround and. Uh, any kind of loading space. So it's very, it's for temporary vehicles and emergency access only. There's no parking allowed in that area.
Would that be enforced?
It, there would be striping on the ground and, you know, we have.
As far as residents not being allowed to park in front of their units.
Well, it's a fire lane, so it would, you know.
Well, and there will be, they're, they're, they're projected as rentals, so there'll be a management company. Uh, maybe it's the property owners, maybe it's an outside, I think it'll be an outside agency that'll manage the property. And if there's issues, then they'll be towed. They'll be, you know, they'll, they'll be evicted. I mean, there, there's a process on our end, but there's also a process on your end. Because if you tell us that we can't park cars there and the zoning inspector comes out and sees it, we're gonna get a cease and desist or the fire marshal is gonna come and, and. And cite us for that.
Commissioner Brown.
Um, I have a question for you as a lawyer. It's my opinion as a lawyer that eight dash thirty G. Requires you to provide thirty percent affordable for forty years for you to avail yourself of the statute. However. In my opinion, if we agree on something less, that would legally be okay. In other words, when we sometimes have appeals and we discuss settlement at a lower scale, sometimes the developer wants a lower percentage of affordable. So I'm just looking at this. So if you had a ten-unit, the law says you have to, you know, dedicate, deed restrict, three out of ten is thirty percent. If you had six, it would be two out of six. Potentially, in my opinion, that could go down to one. But is, in your opinion, is that legal under eight dash thirty G? I believe it is. I believe we can agree with what we want. You have to commit to that in order to avail yourself of eight thirty G, but if we agree on something different, we could do that, in my opinion.
Uh, so I get to the same place, but I don't think I agree that that's an eight dash thirty G development. And I think that if you called it that and someone didn't like, they, they were, they wanted more affordable housing, that they could challenge, they could, they could appeal that. As not compliant with eight dash thirty G. On the other hand, you're, you make the rules. So you, you wanna allow six units and, and one affordable? You make a reg that says that you can do that and. Oof, it's allowed and you don't, you don't need eight dash thirty G. It's just what you've said you're allowing. What's that?
I don't know who would appeal that.
I, I, I don't know either, but I, I, so I, I don't, but I don't, I don't think you can do less than, than, than what's in the statute by, by agreement absent. Either a variance, uh, potentially a settlement in the court case or a reg change.
It's worthy of looking at anyway. Thanks.
Yeah.
Commissioner Randolph.
Um, to follow up on uh, Commissioner Vilgato's uh, question, we can get Mr. Sarno's drawing.
We don't have.
I, I have it.
I don't have his exact drawing, but I do have my plan that shows it, yeah.
So. Going north. Unit, right here?
Yep.
Um, how's that vehicle gonna get out of the?
Out of its garage?
Out of the complex. Can it have the back all the way out?
No, no. So that, that's a twenty-four foot uh, back out area, the P and Z. It's, it's enough space for a, even a suburban SUV to get into the garage. Be able to back out of the garage and still turn around.
Did you make a K-turn in that?
Yeah, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-four foot is the typical standard for a parking lot. Twenty-four foot's actually what's available right outside the door right there.
So it can, it can uh, make a K-turn at.
Basically, it sits in its garage. It would back out of the garage and be able to get just one single motion or two motions.
You've, it sounds like you've, have you specifically studied that?
Yeah, yeah, we, we make sure the P and Z regs require a twenty-four foot back out. That's pretty standard across most areas in the state. And it, it's really the minimum that we would be comfortable providing in this case.
Yeah, and that, that really is. Twenty-four feet is like the gold standard for, for drive aisles. On a, on a right angle like this, on a ninety degree.
Un- understood. So you just, did you study the K-turn on that? Make sure it doesn't, uh, make sure it can get out?
Yeah, I, I haven't done it on this particular project, but I have done it on other projects of the same nature.
Thank you.
No questions? Commissioner Levy.
I understand you, the property will be striped to show the fire lanes. So for instance, nobody will be able to park between uh, the two buildings. Uh, would it be inappropriate or would it be okay to have a condition of approval? That uh, no parking outside of the garages other than the four accessory spaces uh, be permitted? Would that address the concerns about fire access and?
You're saying arcing? Uh, just wanna make sure I'm clear. You're saying a, a condition of approval that people don't park there or a condition of approval that we have more striping? Cause I think the, the town wanted some other striping and I, I, I mean, I, I prefer to start without all the things striped to death. Um, looking like a basketball court, but um, if, but I, but a condition of approval that, that people don't park in front of the, the garage bays is acceptable.
Yeah, and that would, would that address the fire safety concerns and?
Yeah, so the, the fire marshal hasn't expressed those fire safety concerns, nor has our expert. The, the public has. We're willing to accept that as a condition.
Final questions? Commissioner Harrison, you good?
I will close the.
Yes, I'm good. Thank you for asking. Sorry.
Thank you. Close the public hearing on this item. Few seconds uh. All right, I will call the next two items together. Uh, public hearings on four thirty and four fifty-two Stilson Road. Zoning change application of Shapiro Commons LLC to establish a designed residence district on land presently zoned Residence A. And four thirty and four fifty-two Stilson Road special permit application of Shapiro Commons LLC pertaining to the construction of a nineteen-usa- unit residential development. In a designed residence district zone.
Chairman, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Okay, thank you. Being thirty percent.
Good evening, Chair. Commissioner.
Commissioner Matters. Here Commissioners Chris Russo with Russo, oh, sorry. Do you want do you want me to just wait to start then?
Do you want me to do want to wait to leave the site lineup? Are you ready for that? Or you're going to talk a little bit first now?
Um, if you.
All right.
Yeah, that's good. Want me to start here or wait till till?
Just be five seconds.
Okay. Let me go. Okay, go ahead. All right. Chair Commissioners Chris Russo with Russo and RZO LLC offices at Tensasco Hill Road in Fairfield here for the weekly residency of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a uh zone change application uh and a uh special permit site plan review for the properties located uh at four thirty and four fifty two Stilson Road. Um, I know you've called these uh together, um but I'll start by with the discussion um regarding the uh zone change. So uh again, uh the properties four thirty and four fifty two uh Stilson Road uh located just south of Black Rock Turnpike, uh it's sole access out onto uh Stilson Road. Um, it satisfies all your standards for the designed residence district. It's in a residential A zone. It's uh well over an acre, uh seventy two thousand square feet. Um, it has fifty feet of frontage, um which is on a collector road, uh Stilson Road. Um, and it's a lot with access um to uh to the necessary utilities. The other thing I'll show you, which actually is not that broad, is that the location of this DRD um is in line with a lot of other DRDs, which is to say that um it abuts a commercial district or in some instances throughout town, abuts uh industrial districts. So if you uh look at this, this is your zoning map. Um, you have uh the DRD located just north of this, really on the opposite side of of Black Rock Turnpike. Uh, this is the Oaks, um again, directly abutting Black Rock Turnpike DCD. Um, and then um the Melody condominiums is another DRD, again, directly abutting uh the DCD. Um, but if you continue and you look uh throughout your uh, you know, your zoning map, what you're going to see is, yes, there are some DRDs that are out on islands, but there is significant amount that are concentrated um abutting commercial corridors. See right here, uh there's another pocket right there, DRD here. Two other DRDs. This is actually where the um uh Circle Diner, uh where the Circle Diner is. Um, there's one abutting uh design industrial downtown, and you can see another, yeah. Common theme, common characteristic uh for DRDs uh to abut a DCD, uh some type of commercial or industrial district. Um, and again, within the vicinity of this site, very close vicinity of the site, we have two. Um, the Oaks and the uh Melly Lane uh condominiums. Um, and that's, I I I think, you know, it it spelled out in your regulations, spelled out in your P O C D that these DRDs are meant to create a transition from something like a a a DCD um where it's one of the heavier commercial corridors um and in the town, and you're transitioning it um to residential. Um, and you know, and that's certainly the case with this site. We have Black Rock Turnpike. And then below you can see we have uh Residence A. Um, so we are looking to make that transition, not just um and I I think you're going to see this on the layout. We're we're not just trying to do that from uh the the Black Rock Turnpike corridor to our properties down to Residence A. We're actually trying to accomplish that step down on our property. And I I I'll go through that when I go through the layout and how we're trying to, you know, make that transition within um our own site. So with regard to your P O C D, um your current P O C D. Um, as noted in the P O C D, uh Fairfield Housing Stock was built to service an overwhelmingly single family market, but it identified a trend that the baby juke boomer generation has been reaching retirement age. Uh, some it's a trend that's um, you know, obviously been occurring more as 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 time has gone on, um which has led to an increased demand for downsizing options, uh such as smaller homes, townhouses, or retirement communities. Um, this is something that's noted in your draft P O C D, which I I recognize is a draft P O C D. Um, but it just speaks to the fact that it's something that's continued. Um, this application directly addresses this trend um by creating a DRD um and permitting a density uh to address this demand uh from the baby boomer generation. Um, it also affords the opportunity uh to create additional housing in a location that meets the shift in lifestyle preferences that was identified in the P O C D. Um, individuals and families want to be located in close proximity uh to public amenities and commercial corridors. And the site, this site is located next to one of the major commercial corridors in town. Um, residents of this DRD uh would be able to utilize sidewalks uh and connect to this corridor and its amenities within seconds. And uh the P O C D, again, the current P O C D noted that the goal of transportation pro- programs um that had occurred in the past had usually been to make the highway system uh as efficient as possible, which has led to overbuilt roadways, while the needs of pedestrians um have often either been ignored or cons- only considered minimally. Um, I think the zone change, uh along with the other DRDs that have been proposed and approved abutting these commercial districts are aiming to change that. Um, it's it's a it's a development that encourages pedestrian use of the commercial corridors uh and uh which is something that's desperately needed. Um, and 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 one of the other things I think these types of developments promote um are efficiencies. I'm I'm going to go through that in more detail with the site plan, but um, you know, it it's a question of creating additional housing, which which is a need in town. Um, and um doing it in an efficient manner manner, locating it in very close proximity commercial corridor, but also doing things like which which you'll see in the site plan, which is actually reducing uh the number of exit drives that currently exist on that site. One thing, nineteen you, you know, increase in the in the number of units on on the property with this application. But actually, we are reducing uh the exit drives um that currently uh are at this uh site. Um, as I stated, uh a specific goal of the P O C D is the utilization of the DRD as a transition from commercial uses to single family residential use, specifically stated in the P O C D, and this site uh clearly achieves this. Um, and uh there's also a goal in your P O C D uh to create more affordable housing. Uh, and uh I'll note with your recent text amendment that you proved, if you remember, um for DRDs, the affordable housing percentage was increased uh from ten to fifteen percent. Um, and so what you'll what you'll see when I make the presentation on 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 the actual special permit is uh i- is that we satisfy that fifteen percent requirement. So um uh you know, again, it it seeking to address this need. And while the new P O C D is the or the I should say, I shouldn't say the new P O C D, the draft P O C D is the one that spends a lot of time talking about and identifying missing middle housing um as a target over the course of the next decade. Um, I I do think the current PC P O C D, while I'm not specifically saying missing middle housing, uh does target that type of housing um as a uh as as what it says is um uh provide a range of buildings with multiple units uh that are compatible in scale and form um with detached single family homes um and uh addressing the diverse the diversity of housing needs that are in the town. Um, so I think that's what this application aims to do, is address this missing middle housing issue. Um, and and uh this this commission has recently approved the text amendment again, and this application uh is is fully compliant with those standards uh that the ones that were existing and then the ones that that were uh amended as part of that prior application. So with that, I'll get into the uh special permit portion of the application. Just walk you through the plans here. So this is the current site. Again, it's on the western side of Stilson Road, south of um uh Black Rock Turnpike.
Uh, Mr. Attorney Russo, I'm sorry, it's Commissioner Harrison. I can't see what you're presenting. Is it possible for um Miss Harrigan to? Starting.
Yeah, um, Emily, I'm on the uh.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Sorry, I have a broken foot.
No, 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 no. Thank you for pointing out it wasn't on. Um, okay, so south of um its intersection with Black Rock Turnpike, uh this is uh the DCD, uh below is Residence A, um there's office building across the street. You'll see this kind of notch in the rear of the property. That's the large property that contains uh Old Navy. Um, that's where the that that big retail building is. Um, so that DCD actually extends down into here um as well. Uh, there are two driveways to what are two existing single family dwellings. Um, the proposal for this um development is to demolish this single family dwelling. Um, but to leave this single family and its garage. So I was talking about the transition from the DCD, and you'll see it more when I flip the site plan, but we're trying to do that on the site as well. You know, we're going from DCD. You're going to see our largest building, longest building is along the DCD portion of the site. And then we have this step down. We have our smaller buildings along here, and then we're leaving this existing single family. So even on the site, we're trying to make this transition from you know, heavy commercial use, a little bit higher density housing, and then and then stepping it down. Um, but uh again, so this building is being removed, but this one would stay. Uh, as it's currently got two dwellings, just to be clear on the number of units being proposed, so there's nineteen units in total. Um, that's that's really only an increase of seventeen units from existing conditions. So it's going to be eighteen. This one's going to get demolished. It's eighteen new units, and then the nineteenth unit is the um uh is the existing single family. So just to be clear, just so so you understand, it's not nineteen new ones. It's we're keeping, we're maintaining this one. Uh, under the regulations, the the new density that was permitted on the text amendment, we would actually be permitted twenty one. Um, but we're we're only proposing nineteen. So this is a proposed site layout. Yeah, thanks, Emily. Um. Again, nineteen units. They're separated. The new units are separated amongst four buildings. So here, along the border with the DCD, we have seven units. Then you have a five unit building. Again, this is DCD here. It's turned this way. Um, and again, to try to minimize the bulk that's against the single family property. So this is five unit building, and then there's a two unit and a four unit. Those are the new units, and what you could see here, the nineteenth unit uh is is the uh existing single family. Access, if you're heading south, you will only be able to enter this northern driveway. If you're heading south, you will not, if you're if you're traveling north on Stilson, you're entering the site at this drive, at the southern drive. What you'll see here in this hash mark, it's it's a mountable median. It's for emergency access. There's a turning plan that's been submitted that shows um uh the the turning radius for uh for emergency vehicles um and shows that they can make it. They they're the ones who use this, what's 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 called a mountable median. Um, but for the residents, uh this um they're coming in, they're heading south here, and then they are entering, if they're coming up north, we're going to enter from the southern driveway. The exit drive is here. This is the southern driveway, which puts it as far away as possible from the intersection to the north. That's the only exit drive. Um, as far as the buildings, the closest new building to Stilson Road is behind both these buildings. It's set back further from the street than the existing buildings. Um, you may remember one of the text amendments that was approved uh recently was regard to setback um from uh in a DRD from a DCD. And what that allowed was for these buildings to mirror what you would have at a on a DCD. So at a DCD, you can have a side setback zero feet or ten feet. This building is located a little over ten feet away from this side property line. What that enabled us and 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 one of the things I discussed when I made that presentation, what that enables is to create a greater buffer from single family residential zone. So these new buildings, this building right here is thirty eight feet away from that uh property line, and this building is thirty two feet, thirty two feet away, and this one's set back even farther. So over thirty feet allows it to shift the bulk of these buildings closer to the uh to the to the DCD. As far as uh parking layout, we have six spaces here um that are um for visitors. We also have four spaces uh here. Um, but as you'll see, and I I'll I'll show you the elevations floor plans, each unit has two car parking. And then on top of it, behind them, there's space for an additional two cars. Um, so just to give you the numbers, under your regulations, fifty seven spaces would be required. Um, with just the new units and the two spaces in and the two behind, we're providing seventy two. Plus is the other ten that are in the outside parking areas. And um that's separate from the parking for the single family dwelling, which essentially have the same parking that it that it has now. So we we more than meet the the parking requirement under the regulations. One of the things, one of the other text amendments, you know, uh that was adopted recently uh allow the spaces behind uh the garages to be counted towards uh the parking prime, which makes sense because I mean, this is the these aren't, these will be controlled by these units. It's not something, uh you know, that's shared. It it these these units will control the spaces obviously in the garage, but also um the spaces uh behind the garage. Uh, the other, I I talked about the split of the units. One of the things, so under your regulations, it states that um buildings should contain four units or less, except if you abut a DCD. Um, the commission has the discretion to allow more than four units in within a building. And so again, that's what we tried to do here is we kind of we tried to, now that applies to the whole s- whole s- site. But what we tried to do with the design of uh this site plan is kind of honor that intent. And what we did was we located the ones with more than four units closer to the DCD. So again, this is a seven unit, close to the DCD, and then um the five unit we turned. And you know, the bulk of it is closer um to the uh to the DCD. Whereas closer to the residential, we have a four unit building uh and a uh a two unit building. Uh, applies with your height, it's less than forty feet in height, and it's a three story buildings. And the other thing I'll show you, if I can pull up an aerial. One of the things, uh one of the reasons I think this site is really a great site for um or a DRD and uh and this type of density. Or a D R D and uh and this type of density is. If you look here, these are the two lots, this is four-thirty and this is four-fifty-two. You can see here, here's the office building, this is the Dolan Office Building. You can see here's the Old Navy Building that wraps around kind of the rear, and that property actually extends down. Um, down all the way down here, and then there's a large wetland uh that is off in this direction. And and just for the record, we received uh approval uh for the wet, from the Wetlands Commission. But what you can see is, these are very deep properties, including our neighbor to the south. And again, we've tried to put the bulk here. Here, closest to the D C D, but then also in back in this area, the the our our neighbor to the south. His house is up here towards the front, towards Stillson Road, back here, I believe he has a garage. And we have the two family back here and the four unit, you can manage back here, so not really parallel with his house, but you know, trying to. Locate it more towards this rear, closer towards, you know, where this Old Navy Building is, and and try to skew it towards the uh. Um, the D C D area of the site, I guess you'd say. Sorry to jump on you. Giving you on your toes. Okay. Back to the. Just run through some more of these site plans here, and we do have, just just so you know, uh Jason Edwards um is on the uh call. Um, and then we also have our traffic expert who I'll turn it over to shortly on this. Um. So utility plan, we c- connect to the necessary utilities required under your D R D regulations. Sentiment erosion control was an important part of our uh our Wetlands uh process, which we. Uh, again, received uh approval from the Wetlands Commission for this development, just skip. Here's that turning plan that I mentioned. Um, this does, th- this plan shows a number of things, one, it shows that we have the appropriate sightlines. Um, particularly looking to the north um from this driveway, uh which again, this is the only exit driveway here. Um, and but what you can also see here on this plan is that turn, and you could see that those those fire vehicles are able to go over this. This mountable median um to be able to access the site and get circulation around the site. We submitted our lighting plan to show that we're dark sky compliant, as you could see. And if you look, I mean, really pretty well set back from the the our property line. Um, shows that we're we're dark sky compliant to make sure um we don't impact our neighbors. The other thing we're providing, I think Neil is probably gonna talk a little bit about this when he when he talks about traffic. Um, is the ability to pulling back our curb. And a number of years ago, um there was a corridor study, uh Black Rock Turnpike Corridor Study. Um, that looked at alleviating traffic um on. Black Rock Turnpike and its surrounding roadways. Uh, it had a lot of suggestions in it. Um, and one of them was. Being able to extend. The left turn lane. Uh, on Stillson. To get onto Black Rock Turnpike. If you ever drove driven on Stillson Road, you know, there's sometimes a very annoying occurrence, which is that. The left turn lane gets so backed up. That even if there's space here, that cars could go by that need to be turned right, to to be able to turn right. They get blocked from being able to get around these cars to get and fill in that gap area. What will benefits in redeveloping the site, and you, you know, I mean, you can almost kind of see it just looking at a distance. There's just, there's a a joint here in the, in Stillson Road, this kind of hitch that's in Stillson Road. And what this development allows us to do is pull back, and then if the. If, if and when the town and the state move forward with some of these objectives. That they identified in this Black Rock Corridor Study project, they can extend this left turn lane. And um our engineer looked at this just to see. We pulled this back, how many vehicles could you add to this left Q lane? Um, and as you can see here in the white, these are six extra vehicles, which, you know, again, so you're increasing the capacity of the left turn lane. Which then makes it a ma- you know, opens this area for cars to be able to get around that are turning right. So it's one of, I mean, that's that study's sixty pages long, it goes throughout that area, there's a. I think there's a um uh a roundabout proposed in one area, there's a lot of proposals in it. But it looks at this intersection, it proposes a number of different measures, um and this is one of them. And 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 so again, one of the benefits that we can offer with this project is to pull this back. Um, and uh and allow for a widening here, to be able to extend this uh left turn lane. And that's what this this plan shows. And finally, from site plan point of view, uh here's our landscape plan. Uh. See, we have buffering along the entire perimeter, also throughout the site. Um, we have an evergreen buffer along this property line, uh which is something that your regs require. Um, but there's also a mixture of trees, uh pin oaks, I think uh sycamores interspersed. Uh, throughout this area, put extensive planting lists, including one that was reviewed by uh Wetlands. And you know, down in the regulated area um uh to enhance that area. Um, but something that we think creates green, and again, I think one of the things you could see here is by maintaining the single-family dwelling. We are maintaining a significant amount of green space in the vicinity of. Our neighboring property to the south, and particularly, because you could see the outline of their house there, particularly in the vicinity uh of of their dwelling. Um, so I I I I think it's one of the the key aspects of this uh uh this design. Next, I'll just go through. Elevations. So the the new buildings mirror each other. Um, so I'll I'm I'll just show you one as an example, this is the one that's uh the seven-unit that's closest to uh to Stillson. Um, and so um you can see the front here, two-car garage, a lot of windows. Um, uh different dividing lines, um and uh. Something, something I, yeah, I've seen in a lot of D R D developments in the area. This is, let me flip to another thing, because I'll start on the garage floor, because this is the up. So this garage level, two-car garage, and then there's a guest bedroom with a full bath. Attached to it, then the main living floor, open concept, living area, dining room, kitchen, half-bath. And go upstairs. And. Another two bedrooms. And um full baths. And laundry, and then up here is just a a an attic. Uh, again, fully compliant um with your your height standards. With that, I'll turn over to Neil if he's on, and he can. Can run through uh his traffic report, which was submitted. Neil, you on?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Let me turn on my camera too. Alrighty. So like, see, thanks everybody, um good evening for the record, my name is Neil Olinsky. I'm with S L R Consulting, and actually filling in today for Dave Sullivan, who couldn't make it, but we both worked on the traffic study for this development. So I'm up to speed on things. As you've heard, it's a pretty small development, um I think it was around nineteen, net increase in units is around nineteen residential units. In our study, I believe we actually um analyzed twenty, twenty units, so I'm slightly conservative in that regard. But as always, you've heard, you've heard me say before, and on our traffic studies, one of the first things we want to do. Is estimate how much new traffic any development is gonna generate. We often look at, and what we did here is we look at a statistical reference published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Called the Trip Generation Manual, um and that, that book of statistics, and it includes all kinds of land uses. What it indicates for a development of this type and this size is that during the weekday morning peak hour, we're looking at around. Only two entering trips and eight exiting trips during a single peak hour in the morning. Of course, there'll be more traffic throughout the rest of the morning. During the afternoon peak hour, we're looking at around seven exiting trips and exactly four entering trips. Um, and we look at peak hours, because quite frankly, they're the busiest times of the day when traffic on the roadway system and. From um developments are often um busiest, so we look at those and we analyze those. So these are pretty small numbers in the big picture, um quite frankly, this amount of traffic is essentially gonna be an imperceptible amount of new traffic. Um, if we look at the nearby intersection of Stillson at Black Rock Turnpike, it has thousands of cars even during the peak hour. So the amount of new traffic that this development would be adding during the peak hour. Is, it's less than one percent. This development's traffic will be less than one percent of all the traffic at that intersection um during peak hours, for instance. Terms of the routing and the new traffic from this development, what we've estimated is that approximately sixty, six-zero percent. Will be typically routed, distributed through the signalized intersection of Black Rock Turnpike. With the other forty percent to and from the south via Stillson. And um the next step in our traffic study is, we we look at the the intersection, for example, of Stillson at Black Rock. Without versus with this new development's traffic in the mix. Um, the morning peak hour we analyzed was approximately eight o'clock to nine o'clock A M. The afternoon peak hour, five o'clock to six o'clock P M. What we found is that, as you've you've heard, sort of inferred, the the intersection, again, it was studied. By the Metro Cog and the state, because it has problems, what we found, it confirms that. The intersection is gonna operate with or without this development at an overall level of service F. Um, so there's definitely congestion out there during peak hours. But again, that's a que- that's the case today, and this development's traff- traffic is gonna be a small, very small portion of that. Uh, the intersection is, yeah, it has pre-existing conditions that um the um. The Metro Cog Corridor Study has looked at and has proposed improvements for. And this development, as you've heard, also is gonna be contributing to improving this intersection at Black Rock Turnpike. Um, at least in its fair share, by extending that um, that uh northbound approach turn lane. Storage or queue length. Uh, but I got, again, I want to reiterate, this development's quite small, so it's not causing this intersection's level of service F. It's really not expected to make it uh worse, um really adding little to no extra traffic to it. Um. That's, that's pretty much the story in a nutshell, again, this development's gonna be, it's, you know, it's it's in a busy area. But it's gonna be doing what it can to actually improve the intersection, even though it's not really impacting it from a level service standpoint. We also looked at sightlines, um we had some speed counts done, and we found that the sightlines, we often look at what's called intersection site distances. From the point of egress from a site, post-site driveway. What we found is they're gonna meet the standards for the eighty-fifth percentile speeds um passing the site on Stillson, Stillson Road. Um, so that's it, that's pretty much it in a nutshell, in terms of the traffic study, um and I'd be more than happy to try to answer any questions.
Yeah, and I I mean, I think I'll I'll just add to to what Neil said, and then look, Neil's the expert, and he spoke, and I'll I'll point to his analysis as of evidence. Uh, regarding our impacts traffic, but I will say, I I I've been a part of multiple residential development applications. Um, and I remember being here for the Anchorage uh on Uncle Road, I think Commissioner Levy, I think you were here for that one, uh. Well, Commissioner Harrison, I I can't remember if you were on the commission yet for for Anchorage, but.
I was not.
Um. And a- a- for that application. There was a significant amount of concern expressed regarding traffic associated with that development, which was ninety units. Um, and especially because uh it was in proximity um to to one of the busier intersections in town. Downtown, um and and the uh concern of the impact on that intersection. Um, it's now been built, it's been open for years, and that's the way I drive from my house to my parents. I've gone by the Anchorage hundreds of times, I've been to the site, and I honestly couldn't tell you, last time I had to wait for a call. Car pulling in and out of there. And and forget the Anchorage, h- how about Mosswood, which has been there my whole life? Uh, yes, there's obviously cars at Mosswood, they obviously use local roads. Um, but their impact on traffic is, again, dare I say, i- imperceptible. Um, no one says downtown's congestion problems are from Mosswood uh and the Anchorage. I'm not saying there isn't traffic downtown, I'm not saying there isn't traffic on Stillson and Black Rock Turnpike. Um, but I don't think common sense and measured development, I think this is um. As as Neil was pointing out, a a a a limited development in the number of units. Um, I don't think it has to halt when we know development like this, you know, as Neil's pointing out, just extremely little. Uh, to change uh traffic loads in the area. Um, one of the reasons our commercial corridors are so jammed, um is we have all these businesses concentrated on Black Rock Turnpike and on Post Road. And all of our housing is spread a- away from it, so you have to take a car to it. Um, and I think residents who live here uh at this, you know, would potentially live here at this development. Would have this amazing benefit that they could walk to the businesses and amenities that are Black Rock Turnpike. Um, small side story, I, my my best friend that I grew up with here, I lived in Southport. Uh, after college, he moved to New York City, lived city life for a number of years. And he's moved back recently, he lives on Welsh Terrace, south of Post Road. Um, and uh, we met at Colony uh for dinner. And I, coming from where I live in Fairfield, had to drive, so I drove down to Colony and spent the frustrating amount of time it takes to find parking down there. He, I met him out in front of the restaurant, he comes with his wife, his new baby, up with a s- uh uh with a stroller. And I asked him where he parks, and he said, I just walked, I I live right on Welsh Terrace. And I kind of looked at him dumbfounded from my kind of old-school Fairfield mentality of you have to drive everywhere. And he kind of looked at me dumbfounded, which is, you know, why, I live five minutes away, I mean, I I. Five-minute walk away from downtown, that's part of the beauty of um living where he lives. And to be honest, that's one of the most popular areas I find in town, is that Nickel Street. Welsh Terrace, Wayne Street, because. Everything around there is walkable, you can get to restaurants, you can get to shops. If you go down Alden Street, there's a park down there that's right next to the dump, you go down there sometimes, that park is full of families. That is just an easy walk for them, and you don't find that as much around Black Rock Turnpike. And I think locating housing like this is a smart way to start activating. That commercial corridor for more pedestrian traffic, like you see in that this Post Road area. I I I think it's a a a perfect location for that, obviously, you can't get any closer to the heart of um that Black Rock Corridor. Um, than this site. Um. The other thing I'll note is, and again, this is, I'm not an expert, but. The other thing I'll note is, and again, this is, I'm not an expert, but I'll say, when I went to prep. One of the most important things to prep serves was, how quick could you get from prep to the country cow? And it did not take long for us to learn that the quickest way to go was to go take a left on Pansy. And then take a right on Brookside to get to Black Rock Turnpike, rather than going through. Stillson Road and Black Rock Turnpike uh, intersection. We're necessarily swiftest group of people, but we were able to figure out, that's the quickest way we can go to get there. And I think for residents here, if they're going to go to nine ninety-five, obviously, they're taking that right down Stillson Road, and that's where they're going. If they need to get to the merit, I think they are going to learn to avoid that intersection and to. Go down Pansy and go on Brookside, they're going to adapt around the traffic and find um, the least congested route, get to where they're going to go. So I, there's the reality that there's traffic there, obviously, uh, on Black Rock Turnpike. Um, but this development will add, again, an imperceptible amount, I believe, to that. And uh, I think this development will encourage pedestrian use of the corridor, which is needed. But also uh, that it's designed in such a way that's safe, which is, which is obviously a key component when you're designing these things. Um, uh, that it's safe uh, for access uh, to the roadway. Uh, and with that, happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you, Attorney Russo, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear.
Alright, great, thank you, um, thank you for that. I had a question, so back in twenty seventeen, um, I'm sure you're familiar with this. A memory care center was unanimously denied by this commission, um, long before I was on the commission. And one reason that they cited, I think it was a seventy-two-bed memory care with fifty um, off-street parking spaces. And one reason that the commission denied it was because of traffic congestion. I guess my question is, how does, can you distinguish this, your, your application from that?
I mean, I would have to, I, I would have to defer to Neil, I don't know if Neil's been able to, to review. What the traffic generation from, from such a use would be, but I, I would think that use would be significantly more intense. Particularly if it also had employees and um. Uh, that would be coming in and out of the site, or uh, any other services that were provided for that type of use. Uh, you know, I, I think as Neil's showing, with something like the residential development that we're proposing. The numbers are very low, less than one percent. At the peak hours that we're adding to it. I, I'm, I'm not sure what the traffic counts were for that. Um, development, and Neil, did you, did you see that report in your?
I haven't come across that particular report.
That report wasn't submitted in the record for this versus th- this one just so, just for comparison? I'm curious, you know, what the change has been, if, if any.
If I could add some color, I guess, um, I suspect that, that, and I don't have the stats in front of me from ITE, for example, but I suspect. That development is probably estimated to generate more traffic. I don't know the particulars of that site, but as relates to. This, regarding to this site on Stillson, there are multiple routes to get here, which is always a positive, and that can help mitigate some concern in terms of traffic. And um, I think twenty seventeen is, what, eight, eight years ago? You know, a lot has changed, even in the transportation, traffic engineering world, in terms of how we think about congestion. People used to, that used to be the end-all be-all in terms of people being concerned with traffic and traffic congestion. But the, the profession has evolved more to consider. You know, the fact that, you know, that we need to be more focused on not only traffic congestion, but just. Um, improving safety, giving people more um, walkable options, including putting developments nearby. Um, commercial options so people can walk and not contribute to adding more vehicular traffic. And things like that, and um, you know, kind of spitballing, but that's, that's my thought, that's.
Yeah, I mean, that, that traffic study seems somewhat relevant to this, I'd be curious to see what, what that traffic study analysis found. Um, I, I'd like, I'm hoping that the um, planning director Harrigan, we can get that just to, just to do a, you know, comparison, just for our consideration. For this.
Located. Hopefully it's still in the file. My office didn't handle it, so I.
Yeah, I'm curious to see what the actual conditions were then versus where they are today. Maybe they have changed for the better, I, I hope so, I travel that route, you know, several times a week and. Gosh, it's always, it always seems to be backed up and always seems like people are trying to beat that light at forty to fifty miles an hour. So, yeah, look forward to seeing that, thank you.
Thank you.
Another question, Commissioner Randolph?
Oh, yeah, thanks, thanks for your presentation. Um, I'll start with Mr. Olinsky, am I saying your name correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so um, I didn't see a fire access plan, I'll, I'll just give you a couple of questions and you can answer them together. Um, and then also, um, um, I know, I mean, I, I travel through that intersection, I'm part of the problem. Couple through there a couple of times a day, and um, it, it is. Uh, I think anybody who's been through there know, knows that your, your rating is F, of F is charitable. Um, but that's an existing condition, and um, you're, I, I, I'm not disputing your traffic volumes, but. Um, had you studied the, have you studied the crash data? To, to assure that uh, the current plan, and I think uh, I saw that you're right only on the north. I'll say on the east uh, entrance, you're right only in, and then on the west entrance, you're left and right. Um, could you address uh, the crash, basically, how to minimize crash data, because that is a. It is a, a, always a congested um, area. Um, and it's, it is prone, I, I don't know for a fact, but have you studied the crash data there? I don't know, I've not seen an accident there, but um, I'm surprised I haven't. So, fire access and crash data first, please.
Yeah, the fire access, I'm going to kick that to um, the civil engineer, because they, they've, they've been looking at the maneuverability and access of different vehicles. To the site, related to the site plan, but in terms of the traffic or the crash data, we did look at that, and we did include it. A um, summary of that on pages two and three of our traffic study, I suppose I could try to share my screen.
Alan Line's going to pull it up.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so what we found, and we looked at, this um, goes back the prior page, we looked at at least five years of data. And what we found is that the majority of the crashes out there have occurred at, as would be expected at the intersection, the big signalized intersection. I think it was only a couple of crashes that happened um, along Stillson Road adjacent to the site, along the site frontage. Let's see here, yeah, we looked at data from twenty eighteen, yep, but pretty much to twenty twenty-three. Um, a lot of the crashes, as you would expect, at a big intersection like this, where especially signalized intersection, where rear-end collisions. Um, angle types of collisions, um, and things like that. Um, if you could scroll to the next page, let's look, look back at that table again. Yeah, Stillson Road, every fifty-eight, thirty-three uh, crashes. Stillson Road between the site driveway and fifty-eight, there was a fair amount there as well, but only two crashes along the site frontage. Um, the majority of the crashes were property damage only, which is good, um, some injuries. Crashes are in the mix, of course, but yes, again, most of them were uh, rear, rear-end types of collisions. Uh, just about half of all of them, and then angle type of crashes were a big one as well. And I'm not, I'm not too familiar with the, all the nuts and bolts of that corridor study, but oftentimes. Um, corridor studies do try to look at um, crashes as well as traffic flow. Uh, I could dive into that, see if they had any recommendations for that, uh, for, you know.
And, and Neil, this, this development isn't impacting the safety of the, the roadways.
Right, again, that's, that's a key point, I mean, these are, these are crashes that are hurt, occurred in the past, um, this development's adding very little new traffic. In terms of pure safety for this development, again, we looked at sightlines from the driveway exit. And uh, what we found is those are going to be good, those are going to meet the standards for the eighty-fifth percentile speeds of vehicles on Stillson Road approaching the site.
And we're removing an exit drive that's actually closer to the intersection, I understand it was for a single-family dwelling. But we're removing that exit driveway, uh, you know, and, and we're locating our exit driveway as far. Away from the intersection as possible. And then, I don't know, Commissioner Randolph, to answer the, the fire access, uh, I think Jason Edwards is on, and Neil, if you were done, right, were you all, were you all?
I am done, thank you.
Jason, if you're on, I, I'm showing the sightline survey, but I, I don't know if you have another plan you want to pull up.
I, I, I do have, um, good evening, for the record, uh, Jason Edwards, J Edwards Associates Engineers and Surveyors. Uh, located at two twenty-seven Stepney Road in Easton, um, there is, um. It didn't make it onto the, the current version of sheet two point O, but the previous um, submission, that, the initial one. That showed the full path of the fire truck through the site, um, so that was reviewed by the fire department, part of the um, the um. Uh, the initial code, code review, as well as wetlands, it was on there through that, I can show it on my screen, or if anyone has the uh, the. April or January dated plan, it's on that sheet.
No, that answers my question, thank you.
Okay.
You did receive a review from the fire department, you have considered fire uh, ingress and egress.
Yes, yeah, we had a, we had a code review meeting with the, with the department, yep.
Yeah, because I, I didn't see that, um.
Those minutes should be in the record, just, just, just so you know, Commissioner Randolph.
And, and just a, a small question, um, this was in some of the neighborhood, neighborhood correspondents, um, asking for bicycle accommodation. Um, I'm going to table that question, I don't know if you have an answer for it, but um.
Bicycle accommodation in the sense of, of.
The, the, or, for like a bicycle path on the road.
Coordinates ask for bicycle accommodation for uh, commercial and multifamily. Um, it, could you tell me whether that's a requirement for this building as well?
Well, like, if, if they're talking about like. Bike racks, yes, we can absolutely do bike racks, that's, that's not an issue. If, if, because actually, the corridor study and your POC. Yeah, but your P O C D did talk about bicycle paths, I, I mean, that, and, and it's kind of speaks, you know, goes back to this. You know, what we're showing here with um. Pulling back our curbing, you know, and, and being able to widen um, Stillson Road, I think that's. The state and the town's going to have to look at that, they, a- again, they had a lot of suggestions in there and decide what they want to do. I, I think what we, you know, what we can offer at this point is to pull this back, and then whether they use it for bicycle lanes. Or extending this left turn lane, I think that, that'll be up to the town and the state, but at least we're, you know, taking this opportunity to afford that. And, and, and then the, you will see what they, what they do with it.
And do you have new sidewalks proposed?
Yes, Jason, right, Jason, there's new sidewalks shown on the plans, or should be.
Uh, yeah, I believe so, yes, they might show up best on the landscape plan, possibly.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look for that, I. So, next related, um, in the stand of um, cedar trees on that, on the. It's the, I'll just call it the northern or eastern property, it looks like you're going to be taking all of those trees down? I believe those.
Jason, those, those trees are proposed to be removed, correct, and then they're being replaced as shown on the landscape plan?
Yeah, I believe all those trees are, are within our property boundary, if I'm not mistaken, so those would be coming down, yeah.
Yeah, is there, is there a consideration to retain those along the property edge of the house that's remaining?
Oh, 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 you mean on the southern, I'm sorry, on the southern side, I'm sorry, I was thinking you were talking about the northern side.
Uh, the seat, the row, there's a row of cedar trees that go all the way from. I guess the plant's south property, all the way to the back, pretty much the back of the lot, if you walk past there, you can't miss them.
A proposal is to remove them, I can, we can take a look at that again and see about retaining those, um. Uh, I don't see it here on the plan for those to be retained, so.
They're not, they're not retained on the plan, I'm asking you to.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
I think, um, just for the record, I think those go right down the middle of the roadway, I just, just looking at the aerial view.
They're, they're on the property line.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I was looking at the, the aerial, there, there's a, there's a row along the property line between the two parcels, the four thirty and four fifty-two. I, I was noticing, and maybe I'm looking at the wrong.
We'll take a look at it, I'm also, just so you know, I'm, I'm noticing on the uh, Lansky plant too, there's bike racks uh, noted on, on the.
Um, and also, uh, la- lastly, oh, I'm sorry, second to lastly, um. Have, have you done any wildlife studies on the wetlands, I know there's a significant wetland back there, any uh. Studies on, are there endangered species back there?
I'd have to review it back, I, I, I mean, I know we went through during the wetlands process, we looked at all that, I, I. I'd have to look back at the report, though, uh, I apologize, um, I'll try and do that, meanwhile. Uh, uh, public speaking, see if I can come back and, and, and speak to that. Um, I don't remember off the top of my head regarding.
Lastly, um, um, you've got your lighting plan, thank you for submitting that, um, are the lights fully shielded? Dark sky compliant?
The, the site is dark sky compliant. I think, and there are, there are details, Jason, we have those details of the lights on the lighting plan?
Yeah, there's details, the, they are intended to be shielded and dark sky compliant, I, I'm not that familiar with the lights myself. Uh, just done by a consultant, but I believe it was also a condition of the wetland approval that they be dark sky compliant, so we would have to um, conform with that as well.
You can see here, zero, zero, zero. Yeah, but it, that, that's, that's the um, candles, yeah, that's the, that's the level of lighting, it's not whether they're shielded. The lights are shielded that are outside that area, so.
I, we, we, we would be happy if they're not, we'd be happy to shield them. It's a condition, they're not already.
You're getting all the stuff you promised me?
That's good, that's why it's good they taped these turtles, uh, bike racks. We do have the bike racks, I did see that on, on landscape plan, but yes.
Other questions?
Hi, I have a question.
Hi, Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you, um, and this might be for Mr. Olinsky again, um, sorry, just going back to the traffic report. So, trip generation, I believe on page three of the traffic uh, report that you, that you showed. Has basically the same numbers that we just saw on the prior application on King's Drive in Southport, which is totally unrelated to this. Which was about half the size of this um, application. So, ju- just for your context, King's Drive, it was about, it was a ten-lot, single-family attached. And the A on peak traffic trips um, showed two in, seven out. Um, PM would be eleven trips, seven in, four out, so this application, I think it's on page three. Showed that for a twenty-unit, single-family attached housing, you show AM trips would be at ten trips. Two in, eight out, and PM, eleven trips, seven in, four out. I guess, can you explain how this application, which is twice the size of what we just saw in Southport, would basically have virtually the same trip generation?
Yeah, I'll have to double-check that, I mean, sounds like, and I, I'm not familiar with all, much of.
No, that's fair, and I, and I know this is a prior application, that's completely unrelated to yours, I, I get it.
Right, it's, it sounds like that other application is single-family homes, maybe, so that, that's different than what we're proposing with multifamily. And again, uh, filling it tonight, so I can look into what we did, um, and double-check from that our numbers are correct.
Yeah, I'm just curious, I'm just a little, just curious, because this is twice the size of what we saw in Southport.
The Southport development was single-family homes proposed, that's different than what's proposed here with the um, attached multifamily. So technically, type, both residential.
Well, that, that one, that one is, is town homes, townhouses as well, it's not single-family homes.
I'll have to look into it and see, it, it could just be a coincidence, I, I just don't, I just don't.
No, no, fair enough, I'm, yeah, and I, I put you on the spot of a totally unrelated application, so if you could do a follow-up, that, that would be great, thank you.
Sure thing.
Commissioner Harrison, you, just for clarity, you're talking about King's Drive?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, and I appreciate it, I'm, I'm just kind of curious, just because the numbers just seem a little.
Mm-hmm, we'll look into it, thanks.
Sure, thank you.
Attorney Russo, anything else?
Uh, not this.
Okay, I will uh, conclude the initial presentation uh, and go to public comment. To start. I know, I know there is, uh, and I apologize if I uh, mispronounced your name, Hui Teng. Had uh, submitted a brief, and I request to deliver that also, so we will get to that also before. Uh, going to the rest of the public.
So, uh, for the record, my name is Joel Green, I practice on Bridgeport. The offices of Green and Rose, it's my pleasure to be here with the commission this evening, on behalf of Stillson LLC. On behalf of Stillson LLC, uh, the owner of the property two twenty seven Stillson Road. I uh run into an issue. Uh, I wasn't sure what the intent of the commission was on the public hearing on this matter. But our traffic expert sent me a text uh late this afternoon indicating that he, his aunt died and he's. Headed to Massachusetts for a funeral, so uh cannot attend tonight's hearing. Uh, I had talked to Attorney Russo when I arrived this evening. He had suggested that it might be the intention of the commission to hold this open. And I know that you've asked uh questions of their traffic consultant, asked for some additional information. So I'm just wondering if that is uh a plan of the commission.
It is currently nine seventeen. I know we would still have to get to uh rebuttal and I believe. Um, the presentation, the other presentation we had was uh projected to be about eleven minutes, so I suspect. Uh, after we get to additional public comment, we'll probably be close to the end if we even get through it, so um.
I I guess I would ask for that. Uh, this is kind of a unique circumstance out of my control, out of my client's control and. Uh, so I would ask for that courtesy.
And um, sorry, this, when does this application expire?
Um, we have time. Um, we have it on the next. Have it on the next agenda as well for May sixth.
Okay, okay, so let's, let's uh, are are you going to hold? Would you then hold your entire?
I would like to, if I may. It's largely built around the traffic issue. I have, you know, some brief remarks, but the. The substance is traffic safety.
Let's go to uh public then.
I do, I do have to comment, though, that I had the same thought as Commissioner Randolph, as I sit at the intersection of. Stillson Road and Black Rock Turnpike, and those trees are iconic behind uh Dolan's Corner that run across. I looked at the site plan as well. It's kind of. Upsetting, but here we are. We'll talk about that the next hearing. But uh, thank you for your courtesy. I appreciate it.
Okay, so um, Hui Tang? All right, thank you.
This is Hui Tang at four seventy Stillson Road. First, I'd like to clarify the terms missing middle housing and walkable community because we seem to say the words. Without understanding the purpose and meaning. Next. Oh, wait, you went too far. Oh, can you go back? I would say next when it's ready. Um, next, missing middle housing is the houses between single family homes and large apartment buildings. The purpose of it is to address the housing affordability crisis by offering more housing options for middle income families. Those who are not able to afford a single family home and also don't qualify for subsidized or low income housing. However, developers often use the term missing housing to justify denser housing, as in this case. Even when the prices will be out of reach for middle income families. To illustrate this point, a unit in similar townhouse at Old Field Common is priced at about. One point four two five million dollars with a six twenty five, six hundred twenty five dollars monthly HOA fee. Next. Superior Command proposes sixteen units at market rate with a monthly mortgage payment exceeding seven thousand. Dollars plus the HOA fee. These units are far from affordable for middle income families. This is a project featuring expensive single family homes that share walls. So what makes us think we need sixteen more unaffordable homes in Fairfield? As of last week, there are sixty nine active detached single family listings in Fairfield priced below one point four million. Why should we build single family homes that share walls when people already have the option of detached homes with green spaces? Next, it's this one. Superior Command offers only three affordable units as required by law. Unless the applicant wants to lose three times the market value for sale, these three units will probably be for rent. Affordable rental keeps people as renters and it does not help address the affordability issue for homeowners in Fairfield. The proposed affordability plan also disqualifies middle income household in Fairfield from renting. Because it uses the lower state medium income as benchmark. And this proposal, once again, fails to address the intent, the intent of missing middle housing. Which is to provide options for middle income households. Next. Secondly, a true walkable community is not just about being near a shopping center or restaurants. It is an area designed to be pedestrian friendly and safe for walking, and it depends on how people live their lives too. Given the availability of parking in the street malls, driving is more convenient and a safer options for walk uh. Safer option than walking in this area. This is in contrast to the downtown area where parking is limited around those doors. Another way to create a walkable community is when people are forced to walk because they don't have access to a car. For example, we have students and kids walking to and from Osborne Hill Elementary School and Fairfield Woods Middle School. Next. According to the Black Rock Traffic Study, the intersection that's about five hundred feet from the proposed site is at capacity during peak hours. These are, there are pedestrian safety concerns, poor pedestrian environment with many driveways, queuing issues and a few more. Next, according to the crash data from Connecticut Transportation Safety Research Center. Next, in the past five years, there have been over two hundred twenty car accidents occurred within five hundred feet of the proposed site. Including two directly involved school buses and five occurred within a hundred feet and right in front of the proposed site. Next, from the same source, in the past five years, there are over fifty one pedestrian strikes within five hundred feet. Including two pedestrian strikes right in front of the proposed site. This location is an area with a history of traffic and pedestrian safety issues. It is already considered a high risk zone for both drivers and pedestrians. Adding more vehicles from a new development at this scale, particularly with driveways positioned near a dangerous intersection. Could further compromise public safety. Next. The current road is already beyond capacity to safely accommodate an additional thirty vehicles. Let alone over a hundred from sixty, from the sixty eight unit eight thirty G proposal, which appears neither. Well thought out nor structurally sound. I believe we stand a strong chance of winning an appeal, should I come to that? It would be irresponsible for the commission to approve this development in the hope that funding and solutions for the existing. Traffic and infrastructure issues will materialize at some uncertain time in the future. These traffic concerns must be addressed first before any further development is considered. In fact, if it is not already con- in, if it is not already included in the draft P O C D. The commission should consider adding a session to prioritize addressing safety issues along Black Rock Turnpike. And pausing any major development within five hundred feet radius of an major. Intersection on Black Rock Turnpike for the next ten years. Developers can always reapply afterwards. Next, some quick facts. According to D E P, the proposed site is in the alternative groundwater protection. Criteria area. Next, it is within five hundred feet of the natural diversity database area. Next, there was a turtle about twenty feet from the wetland last June. And although deer and turkeys are not protected, they could exist on our property. Next. There is not enough frontage for a well organized thirty egg bean garb- garb- garbage and recycling pickup. Next, by approving this project, we are destroying over forty. Mature and healthy trees that currently serve as a natural transition buffer between the commercial and residential areas. Although the commission has no jurisdiction on trees on private property, you have a choice to save them. Next. D R D can be anywhere in our town, and a desirable D R D has all these amenities and safe access points. And what do we have here in this proposed development? Next. A dense housing structure with significant lock coverage and unsafe access. Where three pedestrian strikes and three car crashes occurred from four thirty Stillson Road. To the corner of Stillson Place in the past five years. Next. Both proposed entrance and exits are located on the same B C street. Close together and near a high risk intersection, unlike the nearby D R D zone at Melody Lane condominium. Next. Here are all other concerns, and that concludes the quick fact. I have a few suggestions for what is possible and appropriate for this land, regardless who executes it. Next. My first suggestion, uh, next, sorry, no, my first suggestion. Although it will still pose safety concerns, is to make the road between four fifty two Stillson Road and building one the primary. Entrance and exit for the townhouses. Minimizing confusion is key. And having a single driveway will improve traffic flow for drivers. I also recommend removing building three, building four, and optionally two to three additional units to create more parking. Green space and a designated snow piles area. Next.
Look at your texts.
Another reason to remove building four is that it is too close to the wetland area.
What?
Commissioner Harrison, uh, we hear you just away. Sorry, go ahead.
Another reason to remove building four is that it is too close to the wetland area and a commercial snow piles and dumpster area. Further information can be found in my email. The next slide shows the before and the next one shows the after rendering. But the increase of fifteen to twenty vehicles will still have a negative impact to our community. Next, my second suggestion, which is a preferred option, is to subdivide land and build duplexes with zoning at the rear of each single family. Home. Fairfield has a greater need for duplexes than any other type of missing middle housing. Because duplexes offer a more attainable path to homeownership by qualifying low to in. Low to middle income household for mortgages and having lower monthly costs for renters help. Smaller differences require fewer materials, reduce costs, allow for quicker turnaround for developers. And make it easier for buyers to qualify for a mortgage. They also provide a great downsizing option for elderly residents. It's a win-win-win. The next slides show the after rendering, simple and manageable. Next, my final suggestion is for the applicants to sell the property to a family that truly appreciates green space. And walk away with over seventy five dollar, uh, over seventy five thousand dollars by doing nothing else. Next. We must prioritize the safety of Fairfield residents above all else. This proposed development is not the best thing for the town. Given the more viable options suggested for this parcel of land, if the numbers don't work for a developer. Then perhaps the developer is simply not the right fit for the site. Next. In conclusion, this site is located at a major traffic bottleneck and a safety hazard area. The propose, the proposal does not help middle income family in accessing missing middle housing. And does not contribute to a meaningful affordable housing solution. It fails to facilitate a true walkable community. It disrupts environmental peace, diminishes the characteristics of the community. And overlooks the points I raised in the quick facts section. While we welcome new residents to our town. We must also prioritize supporting and retaining those who already call it home. It is not necessary to develop every, it is not necessary to develop every available parcel of land. Simply because it is available or proposed for development. Safety always comes first. With that in mind, I encourage the commission to deny the song change request and special permit request for the current architectural proposal. Next, lastly, I will leave you with this question. Given all the facts presented. What makes it so important to approve a development like this at this location right now? Thank you for your time and consideration.
Uh, estimated your time estimate.
Says it all. So true.
Okay, uh, open up to others in the room. Uh, anyone here wish to be heard, just uh come on up.
It'll be a minute.
It'll be a minute.
I know everybody's hungry and tired, so I'm only gonna talk for a minute or two. I live on four thirty nine Stillson Road, which is directly across from the the property that they're talking about here.
Again, your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Hal Alonso. I could tell you. The actual factual thing. Traffic there is crazy. It's not just the left lane that gets backed up, it's both lanes. And it just doesn't get backed up a a a block or two. It goes maybe like a mile. And anybody that has driven on that road knows this for a fact. The information that you received about the accidents, I've lived there for eight years and I have witnessed myself. And I work all day. I I come home at five o'clock and I've witnessed seven accidents. One of them. Was six months ago, right smack in front of the property that they're, they want to do this development. There's a guy laying in the middle of the street. That's not a fender bender, that's somebody getting struck. There's kids walking up and down that street, going from. Osborne School, from Fairfield to go to all the many stores and restaurants that are located on Black Rock. Many, and as far as danger, I can't think of a more dangerous area in town than than this Stillson Road. And I'm not just saying it for myself, I'm just saying I'm really concerned cuz we, I've seen so many accidents, so many. On Stillson Road, not on Black, Black Rock also many, but right on on Stillson Road. So she has, everything she has said is right on point, you know, it's. It's, this is just not a good thing for for Fairfield. And one of the comments that uh Commissioner Randolph made on another development they talked about is that. Uh, Fairfield deserves better. You know, we wanna keep this town the way it is now, the way. That people wanna stay here and and raise their families, and this development would definitely be detrimental to that. That's it.
My name is Mary Ann Sperry. I live at one fifty four Pansy Road. And I also oh uh own one seventy six Pansy Road. It's seven and a half acres in total. And it's the back uh within two hundred feet of the back of the proposal. So I wasn't prepared to speak tonight. I'm usually asleep by now. But I'm glad that I stayed. I first want to thank all of you because I think you've asked so many wonderful questions tonight, including the other uh. Proposals that I listened to, so I really am very appreciative of that, and I know you're gonna go forward to look into this very carefully. So as far as the history goes, our family came here in Pansy Road. Twenty three and a half acres, but they came in um nineteen seventeen, my grandparents. And so. When you talk about the beautiful trees and everything all around, they were little trees when I was there and there weren't. There wasn't anything up at Black Rock Turnpike, so some of you are already remember that far and far in the past. But I want to say that LaVigne, she did a beautiful job and the gentleman then went after because. They captured what Fairfield is, what it was to me, my whole family on Pan- Pansy Road, and what we wanted to be. And to continue to be, this is not the place where I really thought the presentation and the proposal is very good. I would like to see it in the town. It's a good plan, but definitely the wrong place. It's as simple and clear to me as that. Um, and I'm so happy to Commissioner, uh, the Commissioner Hoffman, no, I'm sorry. Harrison, thank you for bringing up the night, uh, the twenty seventeen uh project that was proposed. I don't, I don't think it was fifty or seventy two uh patients. I think it was lower. But in fact, it was um. not passed because of the traffic. And so to find that study and to go back and pair it and look at it, because if anything, in those past eight years, whatever, it's gotten worse. I, it has definitely gotten worse. And you were right to say it's the right lane, it's the left lane. So when I was young on Pansy Road, we used to walk to Fairfield Woods. We used to walk to school. And I am touched, living back at my family's home, my original home that I grew up in, to see all the children that are there around the area, walking home from Fairfield Woods. That, I was a middle school teacher for forty-six years. I love that age, it is wonderful for them. They can go to some of the areas for business or whatever. But it has to be safe. It isn't even safe now. By adding this, it's making it less safe. And I definitely worry for that. I also know that on Pansy Road, we have beautiful Fairfield University, and the road is filled with traffic all the way past Judge Street, all the way down to Elmus Pansy Road. And it shouldn't be like that. You know, we're, we're, we're not wanting to make it any worse. So I hope that that will happen, that this doesn't go through. Um, I also want to say that I am concerned that the topic of, well, we have this area, so people will look for other ways to get around that four corners. And Pansy Road is one, but it's not the only one. We, I am so happy to look out my front door to see all the mothers and fathers and children and dogs and people walking to the school. We've got so many schoolchildren in the neighborhood, it's fantastic. So when you do this, and people say, okay, I've had it with Black Rock Turnpike, that corner, they're gonna take all these routes and routes, shorter routes, and make them horrible for the rest of these more quiet streets and roads. I don't wanna see that happen, it's going to affect it. And we shouldn't put something in that's going to be dangerous and, and affect it. I did speak, um, and write a letter up about this proposal, but also when it was the other one about the wetland part. So, someone mentioned that it's not going to affect the neighbors. Well, the neighbors in the wetland are the animals and the plants and the species. And it is a jewel. That wetland is a jewel, and we have to keep it that way. And what I'm afraid of is, this will go through, if this goes through, then other builders will wanna come in and say, okay, because actually this was supposed to be four of the houses. Two more houses might wanna do the same thing. And then on the other side of the street, the people say, this is too much, we've gotta do this. Before you know it, this will go all the way down our beautiful Stilson Road. So I appreciate all that you're doing and continue to look and ask your wonderful questions. It really makes a difference, thank you.
You know, that's the room with the bear.
Are you gonna keep comments open for the other attorney till the next?
Yeah, I will, I, I'd like to get through everyone in the room who'd like to speak, but we'll hold the.
Is it gonna be open next, next meeting?
Open for the purpose of Attorney Green.
For Attorney Green or for anybody else?
There's folks in the room now.
I'd like to hear the rest before I speak. Oh, I'll wait till after Attorney Green.
Well, Attorney Green is gonna have the last, uh, the last comment.
Okay, well, before he goes. So that'll be next week.
Well, no, if you're in the room now, then, then come up and speak now.
Okay.
So I have a little bit different opinion on this. I have a vested interest. My name is Matt McDonald, I own four thirty Stilson Road. Um, you know, I, I know that this is a change for the neighborhood, um, for a lot of people, but I do think that you guys should consider this because I do think it is a good use of this property. I've lived there since two thousand nineteen, raised my two sons there. Uh, they walk to middle school at Fairfield Woods. They walk to the, uh, the gas station. I walk to the different conveniences around that area. So it is a very walkable corner. Um, you know, so I, I realize that you could put in more walking paths or, or other things, but it is a very walkable corner. You do access a lot of useful facilities on Black Rock Turnpike. Um, that being said, the traffic accidents that I've seen, and you know, this gentleman here said he saw seven of them. I, I haven't seen that many, living there since two thousand nineteen. And the ones that I have are usually because of the commercial exposure to the bar next door or to the, uh, commercial building across the street that has the dialysis center, that has ambulances coming and going, and a lot of different traffic in, in and out of there. I don't feel that this would do that to that area. It's residential, people come in the morning, or they leave in the morning, they come back at night. Yes, there is some additional traffic, but not to the same degree as a commercial building. At least that's just my opinion. Um, uh, you know, as far as the trees go, anyone wants to clean my gutters, those trees are in my gutters every, every fall. So, you know, it's, uh, they're, they're bittersweet. I agree they're pretty, but you know, they're not quite as, uh, perfect as everybody wants to make them out to be. Um, I did have a question. Uh, do you own the, the farm property on Pansy Road?
We're not asking questions.
You're not asking questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Um, okay, well, I've heard that that farm property is being divided as well. So there's development that goes on all over the town. This use of this property is better than other uses I've seen. The high street location that is strictly in a pure residential neighborhood that, that, that I've heard about. I don't know the details, but, you know, similar to try and develop to a multifamily or a multi-mit property. Um, we just saw the approval of the ten thirty G unit across the street, uh, right behind, um, I don't know the address, but you take the right at the gas station going towards Fairfield Woods on the left there. Um, you know, so there are more aggressive uses for this property than what's being proposed here. And I think that we all wanna maintain a certain decorum and, and style of this town. And I do think that this sort of splits the line. It, it does give us some additional housing. Yes, it's a development, it is forward progress. You know, I mean, why is developers doing that? Because it's the U S of A. Because that's pursuit. Uh, you know, I mean, i- i- it is part of what we, what happens. Um, but I think that the townhomes are a better option than the secondary option, which is on the table, I believe, and it's been submitted. Um, so I, I just think you guys should consider it. I don't think it's a bad use for the, uh, area. I do think that if you wanna look at the traffic study, please do so. I mean, I've been pulling out that driveway now for six, seven years. It, it is, it does get crowded, but it's, it's crowded because of the activity on Black Rock Turnpike. Um, you know? And also, like I said, with the accidents, the, the ones I've seen were from the bar and from the commercial spaces, which had people going in and out of there and the, and the bank. Um, you know, I mean, i- i- the traffic on Stilson Road and Fairfield Woods Road further up is atrocious. You know, the traffic lights need to be adjusted, they need to be timed better. Um, if you try and cross over down, uh, you know, past Fairfield Woods there, you're gonna be stuck in the same traffic that you're stuck in, in front of Stilson Road. Um, so that's it. I just, uh, you know, I think you should consider it. Uh, I know that there are some concerns, and I, I do appreciate that, I really do. Um, but I think there's some, some use for this property in this way that might be, you know, not, not as nega-, not as negatively impacting the, uh, the community, and you might wanna consider.
Anyone else who's here in the room wish to be heard on this item?
Thank you for the opportunity to, uh, to speak on this. My name is Mike Gorman, I live at five oh two Stilson Road, three houses down on the same side as this development. I'm very well aware of the proposal from twenty-seventeen because it was going to be abutting my property. It was a sixty thousand square foot building with, I don't think it had as many, um, parking spaces, and there was all kinds of contention that not as many employees, the residents won't necessarily be driving cars because it was a memory care, you know, elderly care facility. So I do think this is going to add more cars than the last study. Uh, if someone doesn't have a copy from the town, or we've worked with Attorney Green, if he doesn't have a copy, I think we could dig one out because we've seen that, that traffic study, uh, back in twenty-seventeen. I do think it's worth looking at. Other things to consider since that time and relative to a reminder about baby boomers who might be living in this place looking to downsize is that work habits have changed. I used to work in an office all the time, I'm now working at home. So I'm not necessarily going in and out one hour in the morning and one hour in the afternoon. People are going in and out all times of the day. The, so I think you need to look at the time of day. And people mentioned the schools. When schools get out, the traffic time is from three o'clock till six o'clock. It backs up all the way down in front of our house, down past Osborne Hill School. And I can hear it. I can hear the radios in the cars, I can hear the kids walking by from where I'm sitting in my house working. It's every day for an extended period of time. The issues build up around that. Two lanes, some trying to turn left, the rest trying to go straight and right. They, people are constantly trying to get around into that left lane much farther back than they need to be. Um, some other things that I remember from the traffic study that I don't think we saw in the charts are the road right around that proposed development area has a turn and it starts to go down. Right at that point where people are gonna be coming out of that driveway, that's when they pick up speed and they go zooming past our house. I've lived in this house with my wife thirty-five years. I've taught five children how to drive and get in and out of that driveway, which is a skill, thank God, they've mastered because you risk your life trying to make a left turn. Most times you're trying to, even trying to get out on a right turn. Tonight, it took us several minutes just waiting at six thirty, seven o'clock, trying to get out of the driveway to turn right get here. So it's the sightlines, issues around the shape of the, the road and the hill that's there are, they're in that report. I know they are. And I don't see how recommending that people can only turn one way out of one driveway or one way in another driveway. People don't follow that. I've seen that all over town, they're gonna try to turn left wherever they can. Or trying to let their people in and out. Um, people go around Melody Lane and Stilson Place because they can't get through, they can't get out of their driveway, so they're trying to get back into that lane of traffic to get to the traffic light. Uh, it's a mess. And I, I just don't believe that this adding fifty-plus cars coming in and out at all hours of the day isn't gonna have an impact on this, this, uh, the traffic. The safety is, this has to be a significant issue, thinking about the kids that are walking to and from school because the buses don't, there are no buses. Our, our kids go to Osborne Hill and Fairfield Woods, you couldn't take the bus. They had to walk so they would be going across Black Rock Turnpike, that intersection. So we'd end up driving, the kids are figuring out another way, um, rather than having them be at risk going across that intersection. That's what people do. Even though it's a very walkable area, I walk it many times, my wife, my granddaughter, we, we, our kids go around the area, they go to the restaurants. But there's other things in life you're gonna get to. Doctors, everything's not right there in that little strip. So people do drive, people do go all around the area. Um, I heard mention of other of the acronym D R D zones, mentioning the Oaks and mentioning, um, or on Melody Lane, those condominiums or apartments. They have been there for thirty-five years, they were there when we moved in. They are on roads that are wider and not nearly as busy. Trying to put this development right in where there are business driveways right next to each other and people trying to let people in and out or zoom past people in and out. It's, it's a recipe for disaster. So I hope you take that all into consideration and think about the safety and the, the character of the town. These are not, I agree totally with the, uh, earlier presentation, these are not middle housing solutions for people. They are high-end, expensive properties that are trying to wedge into a little area and make it sound like people can walk. They're not just gonna walk, they're gonna get in their cars, they're gonna drive to church, they're gonna drive to the beach, they're gonna drive to all these other places. So I hope you take that all into consideration and look at that prior study. Uh, and take into consideration that things have changed over the years since that time. And I wouldn't say it's anything for the better in terms of the traffic and safety.
Anyone else in the room wish to be heard? Anyone online?
John Zeiss?
Oscar Zeiss?
Hi, uh, John Zeiss, Arrowhead Lane. So I sent in, uh, my comments, so I'm not gonna say them all, but I had a couple additional things that, uh, I thought of hearing the attorney and developer speak. And first thing is, uh, Russo mentioned prep kids going to the Cal. I went to prep. We knew the shortcuts to avoid that intersection, and we went sixty miles per hour through those intersections at times, tried to beat our friends and try and figure out which way is faster. So saying that more people are gonna go down Pansy Road and do those shortcuts and not have a, any, any talk about that in the traffic study is very curious. No, uh, study on impacts to that road, the school that's right nearby. Uh, the fact that the traffic site only included one of the four parts of that intersection, very curious. I put, uh, image, I, I went onto the Yukon website, forget what it's called, to look at the crash data myself in the last five years, and there's tons of accidents. Couple involving school buses with children on it, right on that intersection, not in the study. But conveniently we'll mention that only two happened right in front of, uh, where the property is, yeah, of course, because the building's not there yet. I think we can all agree that this isn't gonna make anything safer. So it, it has to make it, by definition, more people in and out has to make it more unsafe. Uh, I just, and then also the volume study in the traffic report was done during July. Fairfield U is not in session. Kids, kids aren't in school. People are on vacation. Not the right time for a study. Again, very curious, I, I employ you to read what I wrote and use your critical thinking skills because you guys are all here for a reason. You're very smart and not make the same mistake the commission's made in the past. And actually, consider these studies and try and do an independent one because it's very flawed, very flawed. And also, one more thing is, mention that pedestrians are going to be able to walk to all these places, and that helps traffic, blah, blah, blah. Well, how about more risk of pedestrian accidents? Right? Any talk about that in the study? No. So I think there's a major risk, there's tons of pedestrian, uh, don't quote me here, but it was, I think in the study it said eleven percent. I think I saw closer to twenty percent, look at all four, four parts of that intersection for more pedestrians. Like, we need to talk about the severity of those pedestrian accidents, not just the amount of them. And consider the fact that they themselves have said people are gonna go down the side streets more. They need to talk about that. There's gonna be more pedestrians, we need to talk about that, it's very unsafe. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
If you wanna just do one last call.
Okay, uh, anyone else joining remotely or by phone who wishes to be heard on this item? Last call for comments on this item in the room or online? Okay, I, uh, we will hold this public hearing open until our next meeting. Uh, this purpose of allowing Attorney Green to present, and then we'll go to, um, and we'll return next meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.